Ladies and gentlemen, we're starting our March regular session Born School Committee meeting. It is six thirty, eleven to six thirty. And we generally start our meeting with any public comments. Is there anyone in the public that would like to address the group?
Ms. Sutter? Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you.
Seeing none, we'll continue on with our open session. We'll start with the Pledge of Alleges.
To the people of the United States of America, and to the people who stand one nation under God, in the name of their liberty and justice for all.
Okay, although this is not being played live, we'd just like to make an announcement. Anybody recording or audio/video recording this evening that can make the announcement? Okay, seeing none, we'll continue with Heather Apollo reading our Vision and Mission.
Vision: We are a committed community where 100% of born public schools students... Miss Johnson, start. Vision: We are a committed community where 100% of born public school students graduate with the knowledge, habits, and skills to compete and collaborate effectively as society evolves. The town of Born will continually empower students and staff to achieve personal goals and demonstrate lifelong learning. The mission: The mission of the Born Public Schools is to commit hand-to-hand visuals to their success, engage the community in new ways to facilitate student achievement, guarantee a relevant, viable curriculum, and ensure universal accountability that supports the success of all students.
Thank you, Heather. Okay, announcements will start off with school line.
Mr. Chairman, it's open. I just want to, first, I didn't get the second student's name on there, but James is up, junior at Born High School, helping sell the sound system this evening, so I wanted to make sure to thank James for helping us. I know I see Dawson, I'm not sure who is to the right of James.
Jay.
Jay.
Jay Park.
Okay. So I just wanted to compliment them and thank them for their, for tonight. Today, as you know, is Read Across America Day, Dr. Seuss Day. Someone has had the pleasure of breaking up our day in preparation for this evening's meeting by going to read to elementary students. I have the pleasure of going to secondary classroom over at Born Elementary School, read a few books to some of my favorites. One was Berenstain Bears, and it was about truth, it was a nice light classic. And then the other one was Who Am I?, and it's all about a frog, the size of the frog was. But we had a great time at Read Across America over at Born Elementary School this morning. I don't have other announcements, I'll just pay attention to Born High School Athletics. We have several teams that are in the playoffs for South Coast Conference. We have, we've had these, actually, I want Mr. Donnie to talk about the game, because he's up to speed on all of these. Yeah, actually Dawson, when she does, it's good to be able to talk about the games. That's all I have for announcements this evening. I know Seuss reads some probably.
I also went today over to Lyndale to a revert class, which is really nice, and we read Grandfather Twilight. You know, it wasn't anytime, but it was, it was a lot of fun. And I just wanted to announce that the Elementary Science and Engineering Expo is happening March 23rd from 5:30 to 7:00 here at the high school in the I Studio. And this is an opportunity for students and teachers to showcase some of the work they've been doing this year in science and engineering. And it's also an opportunity to engage in some activities that are focused on science and engineering as, as a family. So we're hoping that a lot of elementary students and families will attend. That's all I have.
Anybody on the board have any announcements? Okay, I'll use this opportunity then to introduce our newest school committee member, Erica Fitzpatrick. Erica is the mother of four children, works with three children, take them home and give them to her daughter. I just wanted to reiterate, though, that Erica's term is for the next few months, as she'll be part of the, of the general election that will happen in May, we'll be looking for a few more school committee members. So if you have any interest, the audience, and public members of the community, we'd love to have you on board.
Hi, I'm Erica Fitzpatrick. I am the new interim school committee member till May. I will probably be running in May. I'm using this kind of as a stepping stone to see how I can fit in and make this work. But I'm definitely looking forward to learning a lot and getting to know more people in the Born community and working with all the great administrators and teachers. So thank you.
Thank you, Erica. All right, next up on the agenda, we have Welcome to the School Committee members. But before we get to that, I see Dawson, and I don't see him on the agenda, so should we, so should we make a motion to amend the agenda?
I think you can do that by consensus.
Just by consensus. Dawson, why don't you come on down? Okay, so routine, we have a student member of the school who comes in and gives a report on something going on within the school. Dawson, I'll put it here.
So I just wanted to mention, aside from the past four months, every single on-game I do is online, so...
Dawson, hold your mic up. Thanks.
Sorry about that. So I want to start off, our Born High School Drama Team, or Drama Club, plays seven awards that would help lead them to qualify for the semifinals in their respective drama. Those seven awards will be the pack of all schools throughout the day. A.J. Gates, Sean White, Catherine Brennan, and Amanda Lewis all won for acting. And Michael Cowan, Jim Spirely, Stephanie Belliors, Emma Pacheco, David Markey, and Dave Hamilton won for set design. Jay Allison was up there, won his third straight, Lights, and Andrea Whigley won for Bronx. And now they go March 19th to Franklin High School, actually, where they compete for the finals, or semifinals. Next, I wanted to mention that the career fair is coming to Born, and just above, 15 local companies are coming to Born High on March 8th from 11:45 to 11:45 to mention how their company runs, what type of school community you would need to be a part of their company. And I should mention that you ought to dress nice, as most of you are, just in case you land in armspan and you... I wanted to mention the girls' basketball team, who's playing right now at Archibald's Boys. They, they made it to the tournament, obviously. The boys' basketball plays on Saturday against the winner of Cardinal Stone versus Westport. I think Cardinal Stone and Delaware. And then we play tomorrow against Hopkins Tournament September. Finally, Ms. Sutter would like me to announce that we are looking for parent volunteers to serve on the NEAC, NEASC Standards Committee. You can probably talk a little bit, a little bit about that. But they will undergo the day, decennial visit for the NEASC accreditation in October, and we are looking for parents to feedback this, this spring. And that's about it. And if you want, and if you're interested, you can email Leslie some.
So did you get the winning bowl for last game?
I did, yes.
Congratulations.
And no blonde hair this year either.
No.
Have a good one. One more of those squad interviews, you can have that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dawson. Okay, next up on the agenda, we have to welcome the 2015-2016 School Council members.
This is Chairman School Committee. I know we've had this on our, on our agenda, it's, you know, we still haven't really figured out how to make this work for us, so I apologize for that. We didn't form school council members to come, but you can see there is not a lot in the audience, but there are some members here. I'd be happy to, you know, have principals introduce them to you as a school committee, and if you have any questions or if they want to provide you feedback, you can have. And I promise you, you will get better at this.
You also have a list of them in your, of school council members in your binder as well.
Good evening. I would like to introduce to one of our school council members, Sandy Wincas. Come on back here, Sandy. She's living between here and getting to the ice rink, looking for her son. Sandy has served on our school council and as well as the middle school council. So as her students transitioned to the high school, she transitions, transitioned with them, which is great for us. She not only serves on the council, but she also is our note taker, so she is responsible for taking notes, defending, submitting to all members. She does have this job, and I'm going to give her a moment to say thanks.
Hi, I really enjoy being part of the school council. For anybody else that has ever thought about doing it, it's a really good way to keep in touch with the pulse of what's going on at the different schools, to get the first information, and to get the straight information. I really feel blessed to be able to be a part of it and to know the future comings and goings of what's going on. We get direct feedback from Amy right from school communities, so we're able to hear directly. So if there's ever any questions on budgets or a little word out in the street, we're able to get the right answer and get it back out to the soccer field or the grocery store or whatever, which I feel like is a big part of the job, just making sure that people have the appropriate information, or at least know where to find it, and we're able to tell them that. So it's really, I really enjoy it, and I look forward to having one of these, so thank you.
Sandy, I just wanted to say thank you, because a lot of times there are questions that are out there and people don't, that don't know us, because maybe we're not in school and classes, you know, similar kids' ages and stuff. So it's nice to know that there's that frontline that with an educated information, so not a rumor mill that's spreading that someone that actually knows it straight from, from the admin, so thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Sandy. Okay, next, we have an overnight field trip request. Overnight or out of state, I believe, right?
No.
Just overnight?
Overnight.
We have an overnight field trip request.
We have an overnight field trip request from Heather Doyle, and we also have one coming from the music department with Born High School. And they've both been approved from central office.
Oh, one...
Story, yeah, go ahead. Why don't you tell us about the overnight? Thank you.
So last year, we launched it for two years now, the key club has been attending the DECON, which is the district conference in Springfield with other key clubs from around the Lumin area. Last year, I had the pleasure of taking three students. This year, we have five: the president, vice president, treasurer, and then two delegates. So there's more of the main business now from the club that are bringing new students attending. It's the eighth, ninth tournament. We are going to travel to Springfield on a bus with members from Sturgis, East Sturgis-West, Sandwich, Wareham, which is actually a new key club, that's actually our partner in the key club, it's Born, Wareham. And I believe Lunchable, and I'm not sure about Dennis yet. It's a great opportunity for the kids, like I said, last year, to get to know other key clubs, not only from the key, because obviously it's owned for up to Springfield, but also from Lumin area. And unlike last year, we're actually going to be presenting a service project we did throughout the course of December, what we're calling the Month of Giving, where we did a coat drive, collecting coats from the students at Born High School, but also families. And then we donated them to a local drive theater to have them, and then given to homeless shelters. And we also moved giving bags, and also then we gave them to homeless shelters as well. And we're going to be sending that to the DECON to show the other key clubs what we've been working on throughout the course of this year. So that's something that anyone physically could say about showing the other key clubs what we're doing, because we really didn't do much last year, no guys, to actually present what our key club's projects were. Yeah, it was definitely a learning experience, but we've been doing a lot more this year.
What does DECON stand for to you?
District Conference.
Any questions from the board?
How many key clubbers do you have right now? Total, about four. Four, good, okay. And so it sounds like you've got a good group that are really energized.
Yeah, it's just, I mean, I know a lot of kids want to go, it's just a financial commitment, but also they're going to be involved in getting ready for spring sports, and a lot of them are going to be committed to spring sports. And also it's the weekend before, so a lot of them are not really...
Right, I remember last year, there was an issue with the sports setting for sure.
Yeah, but five hundred degrees, good, so let's hope that we can continue, and what about next year for town? Good.
Okay, anybody would like to make a motion?
I'd like to make a motion, we approve the Born Key Club, uh, it's not staying...
Oh, it's, um...
Excuse me, overnight field trip, the leadership workshop on Springfield from April 8th.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Extensions? Seeing none, seven zero zero. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Now we have a music program of overnight field trip. Christina Born?
Christine. Sorry, everyone does. I'm here on behalf of Lisa Cornier to present, we have a high school student, Abby Isseva, who was selected to participate in the All-State Choir. It's truly an honor to be, she participated at the Southeast District level, and then was recommended based on her score for that audition, to be able to audition for All-State. Auditioned for All-State in January and was accepted into the festival. The students rehearse, I have a schedule of their rehearsal activities if anyone is interested. The students rehearse throughout the day Thursday and Friday, and then they participate in a concert on Saturday that actually takes place at Symphony Hall in Boston. They work under, you know, renowned conductors, and they get to work with students from all over the state. They stay in hotels in the Seaport area under their chaperone, actually, the vibe, well, Scornia will be going, and then they're going in the hotels by other music teachers that are on the state board and working the chaperone. It's a great experience, and an honor for the music department, of course.
Very good, looks like a pretty aggressive schedule, wow.
It is a very aggressive schedule.
Congratulations to Abby Isseva.
Great kid, yeah.
A bit special.
No, I'm just, I'm going to say world overnight, world wide, this is...
Yes.
So that's all.
Yeah, so we do know that it is insane.
It's my mistake, and I didn't...
But because she's...
We're just trying to get you guys to understand.
We're here. It'll feel like we're worlds away, it's really fun.
Okay, then anybody like to make a motion?
That we...
Okay, if you'd like to be the one to, of course, as we answer. Not overnight, okay, it is over. Very good, all those in favor? Uh, excuse me, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The unanimous seven zero zero.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you, and say thank you this morning, too, please. Okay, so Superintendent March, next up is Program of Studies. Come back, you want to toss it over to the principals, who are presenting their, any program studies? Maybe I'll let Susan Sease can say a word, too, if she'd like to before. I didn't think so, but, as the principal's getting up to get to the podium to talk about their program of studies, you have an actual... I'm sorry, Sease, she does want to say something, hold on.
You actually have copies of the programs of studies, and I know that last week, both the high school and the middle school did have program studies with parents. And I see that Melissa is, Melissa Ryan is up first for the middle school, and will be able to share some of the highlights.
And just one last thing, they will be posted on our website in, very shortly.
Thank you. I'm very glad to present to you the Born Middle School Program Studies for the upcoming school year 2015-2017. The program of studies that we're presenting tonight doesn't have a whole lot of changes from the program of studies that we had presented last school year. The middle school didn't make any proposals for new courses this school year. So all of the courses that we had last school year are continuing relatively in the same format as, as we're experiencing currently. The most significant change that you will probably note in the program of studies is actually an update to the course descriptions for our science classes, five through eight. Those course descriptions now reflect the updated science standards. So you'll see that the descriptions have moved from a content specific to more of a spiral reflection in the science curriculum. So that is our most significant change. And there is one small edit, I think, in the copy that you have, on page four, it actually lists the 2015-2016, so that has been updated for the 16-17 year. It actually just lists the testing that we'll experience in the upcoming school year. And I do want to thank Jan Marie Stroh, who helped us with the formatting of our documents. She helped us put it together, it would be so nice. And that's that program study for the middle school.
Sorry, I'm just taking some notes, because if all have any questions, you guys can talk in the space, of course.
Thanks very much for that. I love this program of studies, both of them, in fact. It's just great to, it's a good reference document for parents that are watching, for community members that might not know what the, the schools offer. This is really easy to look through, it's not technical, it's not edutastic, it's very accessible. It takes a lot of work to do it, and to do it well, and this is really done well, so I'm grateful for it, and I really appreciate it. Just real quick, about the science curriculum, you said that it spirals, so by that, we need to say...
So we just had new science standards that are approved, so our teachers have been working on preparing for those new standards, we knew that they were coming down. So up until this point, we experienced science as a, about content specific. So you would experience life science in seventh grade, you'd experience earth science in eighth grade, and so now you are students who experience each of those topic areas throughout each of, each of the grades. So there'll be a piece of life science, there'll be a piece of physical science, there'll be a piece of earth science that exists in each of those grades. So our teachers have been wanting to prepare, to prepare that, because they will be, they've been sharing content knowledge and resources and activities, and they've been adjusting to the new science standards. So these, these course descriptions reflect that change.
And obviously, it's scaffolding in such a way that the same topic doesn't get, you don't have, you don't have to...
Yeah.
Like it does.
Right, yeah, it's, it's been a very carefully scaffold, Christine actually has done quite a bit of work with our science teachers, they actually spend their content area time kind of reviewing what they have done. From, from me, from my perspective, it has been a positive change, particularly for, for our students that come from military family, who depended upon where our students come from. We have had students who potentially that experienced life science for two or three years, because if where they came from, you know, did life science in sixth grade, and now we do life science in seventh grade, they could pursue the same thing for multiple years. So that, that's going to, for our students, is going to be a positive change.
Thanks very much to the teachers that were engaged in the rewrite curriculum, rewriting again, for a late, the late person doesn't understand how much work goes in before you even teach, right, before you engage with the students, so thanks very much.
I do, I do, I'm very proud of this faculty.
Thank you.
Just wanted to reiterate, too, that this will be online and be available on our school website, just because I think a lot of parents out there in the community really, I've needed a lot of sight of how far the middle school's come. I mean, we're out of multi, multi-year language, we do school, engineering, we've been to math, algebra, this is at the middle school level, so coding, that's correct, just extraordinary things that have been offered there. Thank you very much.
Thank you. We did have a program of studies tonight that we actually did it joint with the high school last week, where we presented this to our fifth, sixth, and seventh grade families, and our eighth grade families came for the high school presentation. It actually is a really nice, a nice meeting, I think it highlights all of the work that we've done with the high school, with these courses, kind of the experience at both the middle school and high school at all, the ability to get prior for certain courses if you need to go.
Thank you very much.
Good evening. Our program of studies was, I did actually post it online under our quick links, in preparation for our hearing last Thursday. And obviously, with the caveat, there was a note in there, in case that it does include the Born School Committee. Our program of studies has really come a long way over the past few years. We're excited about program of studies and, and how it's set up this year for ease of use. We know that students are accessing it, we know that parents are accessing it, and we know the ease of use is, is the primary factor which determines how it's used and how often. So, and I was really excited to hear this weekend, when I was here for the drama festival, we had parents, families here, students, and one young student from the middle school came over and said, oh, you know, after that program of studies event that you did, could be a sub, it could be eighth grade last week. Yeah, I was online checking it out, it was really helpful, so we're really excited for the back feedback as well. We really did an overhaul of program of studies last year, and this year, we're really focused on, again, the ease of use. We updated our pathway documents to reflect any changes, sequencing, things like that. As we moved to providing biology for all freshmen, we changed the sequencing in science courses, and that's affected the level at which students are taken in science courses, as this kind of what I call bubbles through the system. And we've also decided this year to change the way in which we offer our elective offerings. We have a ton of elective offerings, I have to tell you, we have full year elective offerings, half year elective offerings, it really runs the game, and we're so excited. And many of these offerings are proposed by students, supported by teachers, and we're really excited about that. But we do recognize that when we provide such an array of offerings, for example, we provide eight elective offerings in history department, for example, when it comes time to run those courses and take a look at what students sign up for which courses, it, it becomes difficult in terms of which courses to run. This course has 15 students, and this course has 10. And really, really to try to make those decisions, to work with the students, and, and provide them with the options that they want. So in response to that, and this has been an ongoing conversation among team leaders, among administrators, among teachers, and among students. So in response to those concerns, we just did decide to take our elective offerings and alternate the years in which they're offered. So we're still offering all of these options, but we're alternating the years in which they're offered, so that we can assure that these courses are running, so that when students are electing these courses, we're saying we're going to provide them. So it just tightens up the system, and we're really excited about that. This year, in the English department, we've been trying to move, especially for the fourth year of leadership for seniors, move towards a format where seniors may elect to take an AP English course, an honors level course, but also expand those options into happier elective courses, which we tried to do the prior year, but we only had a couple of options, so we have expanded those options. We've added five new semester course offerings to the English department, which include real-world communications, marketing... real world communications, marketing, advertising and PR, dystopian literature and technology and social media of today, Shakespeare, then and now, complete study of Shakespeare, the evolution of the tragic hero through literature and film, and cultural influences on American literature, all of which are directly tied to the frameworks. Uh, it's just a more in-depth, uh, examination and, uh, we feel very confident that students will be drawn to these, um, semester courses. They're designed to, uh, you know, give students the option to, um, take a course for a semester, change it up second semester based on their interest. Um, and it's, it's just something that we've been trying to move towards and something that students have asked us for, and many other high schools, uh, do offer these courses. So, um, we're excited to make that change, um, this year. In that, we've made some changes, uh, with, uh, with respect to the program studies and our course offerings, primarily centered around the feedback that we received from college admissions. Um, uh, in 2011, uh, we were notified that, um, students were going to be expected, expected to attend one year of math, which was a change back in 2011. And, uh, we do require all of our students to take four years of math, uh, at foreign high school. Um, along with those changes, those recommendations more recently have come back, um, that in terms of coursework that we're offering here at our high school, we decided to change what's now called advanced math, which is our pre-calculus class, and call it what it is, pre-calculus. That was based on feedback from, uh, directors of admissions. As you may be aware, in the fall, we're flooded with, um, admissions directors coming in, meeting with our students in small groups, uh, introducing them to their colleges. But in that process, our guidance counselors get feedback as well as our teachers in terms of what's going to position our students best, um, as they apply for admissions to four year colleges. Again, a semantics change, but an important one. Uh, we also decided to, uh, take our business math course, which is a full year course, and offer it as a half year course this coming year. Uh, we're going to offer it as a half year course and pair it with, uh, formerly, um, known as personal finance. We renamed that course to financial literacy. Same course, a little bit of a different game against the feedback, um, that we received to better position our students. Didn't really communicate what our coursework is offering. Uh, business math had prior to that, than a fourth year of math for many seniors, but we are, um, streamlining that process this year and really encouraging all of our students, um, at minimum, to, uh, take pre-calculus and use those courses as elective courses. They're great courses, students learn a lot, they give us great feedback, helps me balance my checkbook, helps me understand how to prioritize my money, my time, um, so forth. So we, we find value in those courses, but again, looking at those more not as core courses, but as elective, elective courses for students. Um, in science, there were no additional course offerings or changes made. Um, the only, uh, difference is right now our seniors and juniors are buying for the same courses as biology has moved the process up, as I mentioned, the bubble earlier. Um, so, uh, we're excited to have, um, both sets of students of classes, as you will, apply for these classes and, and expand those offerings as well. In social studies, uh, we did the same thing as we did in the English department where we did, uh, pair semester offerings alternating by year. We did add one additional new course, again, generated by student interest. It's a topic where, when they're discussing it in class, the students want to spend more time on this topic, but unfortunately, the teacher doesn't have that time. So, uh, based on that feedback, uh, they did create this new course called the Holocaust. Uh, so it'll, it'll include a study of the American genocide during World War I. Um, it's just a more in-depth study and the students are excited about that, um, as is the teacher. Uh, I have to say that when we were doing the course selection, when we had the assembly here, uh, in the auditorium, as well as the, um, program study night with the parents, I really encourage the team leaders to get up and promote their programs because they're really excited and they can do a good job. I have to say that their enthusiasm was definitely, um, it definitely played a big role, uh, in terms of communicating the new offerings and the existing offerings, um, both with the parents and with the students. And I just really want to pay the noted thanks to them because they're doing a phenomenal job of really communicating these changes, the offerings, and really just excited about, uh, their content and their, um, their coursework and really, um, sending that message to the students. It's exciting, it's fun, think about this, this is great, try something new. So I really want to thank, uh, the team leaders for their efforts as well. Those were really major changes, other than, other than the, um, design of the program studies and adding those new courses. Any other questions?
Thank you, Ms. Setner. Uh, I think one of the things I love the most about the, um, program studies for the high school are the pathways. Because I think it, you know, connects that student who does know what they want to be when they grow up, um, see the value in that education and connect with their future. And it's, it's helpful for the student who doesn't want to know what they want to be when they grow up and has an interest in something and can actually explore that interest and see the connection to, um, their future. So I love that about this. Um, the other thing I wanted to mention is that, uh, Ms. Setner did present the additional courses at our curriculum subcommittee, um, and we were in full support of those additions. And I love that it's student-generated, that students who have this interest, who are motivated, can have the opportunity and that teachers can give them that, um, opportunity to explore those, um, those, um, those studies even more. So, thank you.
Yeah, the only other thing I can thank about the pathways, because this is third, year three or four for the pathways now?
Year three.
Year three, yeah. It's, they're just, they're even kind of evolving over the last couple of years. Love the questions that are related to each pathway. Do you like to do this? How about that? You might be interested in this, check out these courses. In addition to a much more conventional model for, here's the English department, here's the sequence, and here's all the courses in English, and there's the descriptions, and here's for, you know, humanities and history and on and on, right? So I really appreciate it. Uh, it definitely makes it easier for parents. Uh, I'm really impressed that it's such a, uh, small school, but large enough to have a wide range of offerings. And I think it's a genius to alternate them year in, year out, uh, so that you can, everybody can take advantage of those, so you can increase the, uh, the capacity of, of the teachers to reach more students in those subject areas and all that, that's just awesome. And then kudos to everybody who sort of came to consensus on that being a good way for the leadership. So, that's it. Thank you.
I just came on the curriculum committee also. I really appreciated, uh, hearing the opportunity and the enthusiasm, um, about having these creative opportunities for people, um, and how it does tie right into all of the, you know, the expectations and the frameworks. But the enthusiasm was contagious and, you know, I always, I was intrigued and I was going, not really feeling like I contributed a lot, but I sure am very excited about it. And I can't believe that such a small school can have so many offerings, but it's because of the resourcefulness and because of encouraging, um, teachers and students to have these dialogues to come up with some interesting things. That just like everybody's vibe, so thank you.
One more quick question. Um, do you find, because this is a great tool for students, do you find that students are using it and, and know the value of, of referencing this as a tool when they begin their study, course selections? Or do you find that it's more teacher-directed, they look at the teachers more for the next steps?
That, that's a great question. Um, you know, as I mentioned, it was a middle school student who mentioned to me that she was online, she was working. Um, and, you know, when we do our presentation, I do, uh, in, in my PowerPoint, uh, I do link to these documents. So I actually, while I was presenting the PowerPoint, which is also online, so if there are our parents who are listening to this right now and they want to check it out online, I've actually posted both the grade nine PowerPoint as well as the, um, grade nine, excuse me, grade eleven, and then the current grade nine to eleven, uh, those PowerPoints. They're a little bit different, uh, there are a little different options. Uh, for the, for the freshman, we do hone it in on, really, so it didn't get too, kind of somewhat too confusing, but really hone in on what they can take. Um, uh, you know, so it's hyperlinked directly to these documents, to the pathways, to the, um, to the course sequencing, uh, right down to, um, uh, the ECE EP program. All of those things are linked right to the document. So we really discuss with students that this isn't just done by PowerPoint. It's, it's somewhat, um, you know, interactive in terms of taking those, so those links and giving you that insight. If you're interested in the ECE EP program, click on it. If you're interested in, um, our school to careers program, earning credit for work, click on it, check it out. So, um, and, and Heather Malden, who, um, is in charge of the ECE, I'm, I'm sorry, the, uh, the school to careers program came, you know, we invited her down and she really generated some excitement as well. Um, so again, uh, you know, this is a resource for parents to use as well as students. We also, we do make photoc, a few photocopies, like a handful of photocopies, we put them in the library. As students are rotating in and out of the library, they might be in direct study, it gives them an opportunity. Some students just like that tangible, you know, document to go through and that's fine. Um, but in terms of facilitating communication, we, even though we've gone on to an online spending process with Power School and we're really digitized, um, we still want to maintain those personal, um, connections and that personal feedback. So we still have maintained that, uh, course selection day. Uh, we don't call it course selection day, we call it teacher recommendation day really now. Uh, because it's an opportunity for students to, um, travel from class to class and they're not only getting their recommendations for the upcoming year, they're also able to ask questions about the elective course offerings and, and their teachers in those departments because they have every single class that day, is able to give them that feedback and answer their questions and if not, get back to them with those answers. So it's just a really nice opportunity. Uh, we're so connected, Melissa started, we jumped on board. Uh, Melissa and I coordinate a lot of our, a lot of our, um, events together, which I think really helps families because by coordinating that night together, Melissa, I'm starting to watch. It's great because some families have one foot in each door. So it gives an opportunity to come to Melissa's, to Melissa's presentation at five and then, and then come to, sorry, that's the point. Um, and then come to ours at six, and I just find that that has increased the attendance as well. Um, so, you know, it, you know, students do tell us they use this online resource, but I know maybe they're very, very long and didn't answer to your very quick question. But again, I think, I think it's, it's, it's Mrs. Ryan and I working together, sorry, I'm just doing that to you, don't worry. I know, I know, it's Ryan. Um, and I working so closely together in terms of coordinating these, uh, these events. It just seems like, just streamlines the process so that they don't expect a middle school. It's the same thing in the high school and I think the expectation makes it made it easier for them.
A quick question, does it do enrollment? Do, do, let me just make sure I read correctly, we're now doing four years of math?
Yes, we are.
And, um, I noticed in the enrollment, it still says three, three credits of mathematics.
Three credits of mathematics is required for graduation purposes, but all of our students are scheduled for four years of math.
Okay, great, great, great. Any other questions? Long or short? Thank you, Ms. Setner, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, I was, uh, if I could just add one more thing. Uh, for the committee and for the administration, I really appreciate the comments of the committee because we've seen over the past couple of years the progress of this, on our path of change and improvement. I am also happy to announce today that next year we will have a program of studies for elementary school. MSBA has assisted us in that process, um, so we're going to take advantage of the work that we've done for MSBA and we're going to work on elementary program, program studies for next year as well. So then we'll have program studies for all of our schools. But an excellent segue, I would ask if the committee did mind, since we're at heart, uh, we cannot start our hearing, our budget hearing, four, seven thirty, we have a few minutes, that we might just, uh, take the agenda a little bit out of order and go to item number seven, which is the MSBA school building committee decision, uh, versus, with respect to grade division. And this is a deliberation purpose only, it's something that was put on the agenda. I know you guys, uh, the group has had an opportunity to look in the chat, you know, some of the other information we received during the week, uh, from the superintendent, and I'm going to actually ask him to speak to this in a little while. But, uh, really impetus to this is that the school building group, the committee for this, been charged with developing the school building, making a decision as a variety of options. And we're really coming down to the wire. There's really only two, two meetings, actual school building meetings coming up for us during the month of March, and then the first meeting April seventh is when, when that school building committee has to decide on a particular option in preparation to deliver this, uh, as, as, uh, we're following a preset timeline by the Massachusetts School Building Authority. Very good, good group organization in that they're going to pay half of the building, so they're very good. Now, um, one of the issues that, that we have, that some of the options, particularly one option includes incorporating the fifth grade, um, in the elementary school. And as you're aware, the target of this school building is for the new elementary school to, uh, support or replace the people's school. And, and doing so, uh, we have a, one other option do not include that. And really, uh, the school building committee, as I'm a member of, and Ms. McLean's a member of as well, one of my partners up here, we get a, uh, understanding that that group really is looking for a bit of guidance or maybe some understanding in respects to, um, train that transition, whether or not that transition should occur at the fourth grade, as it does now, uh, excuse me, at, at the fifth grade as it does now, or at the sixth grade. I'm talking about when they migrate on, new students migrate on to, uh, middle school. So I'd ask maybe the superintendent to speak to, to this a little bit and then maybe we could deliberate, at least discuss, have some ideas or some thoughts about this. Thank you very much.
Mr. Chairman, School Committee, uh, I first want to go over a couple of cases that are extremely important. If I mess up at all, um, very likely happens that it dawned on me that I write here to answer any questions. We won't allow misinformation from my colleagues to stay in place. You will correct, correct me along the way. Unfortunately, the community will not...
Hey, do you want a microphone just in case?
Yes. Unfortunately, the community will not see this, this recording until, uh, probably after, but tomorrow evening we have our, our community forum. It's not the last community forum, as we continue to progress, but we have been on a sharp timeline, and that's actually community forum number five. That's the fifth time that we have reached out to the community for feedback regarding this project moving forward. We have a sixth community forum, which is March thirty first, at Bourndale Elementary School, from six to eight P M. So I want to make sure that people have that, uh, down as information. In addition, we have school building committee meetings that meet at the Bourne Veterans Memorial Community Center, and that's open to the public. Those are not closed meetings. They are televised, uh, we have, we have them televised. The next one, um, after tomorrow evening is March tenth. We have a meeting March tenth at the school, uh, at the Bourne Veterans Memorial Community Center. Um, and that is to, uh, review and compare for our work, where, where we are going to have to identify the preferred schematic design moving forward as a school building committee. Uh, then we also have a meeting March twenty fourth for the school building committee, and then we also have an April seventh meeting for the school building committee meeting. All three of those meetings are at the Bourne Veterans Memorial Community Center. Some of them start at seven, some start at six. We do advertise and post these. You can find all this information on the town website. The town website has all of this information in detail for. Now to add, uh, to add some clarity, we're, the school building committee, which is comprised of a cross-section, it's really a town committee, it's not a school committee, uh, group, it's a town committee which has representation from the community, from the school committee, from administration, um, and, uh, other individuals. Uh, we've really narrowed down to four choices at this point in time. One choice is a K through four elementary school on the, um, south side of the bridge or near the, the current People's Elementary School. A second option is a K through five school in the same location, near the People's Elementary School. A third option is a pre-K through four school, um, uh, for all students on the Bourndale or the north side of the canal. So that means putting an addition on Bourndale and having all elementary students pre-K through four attend that building, or that school. Then the last option is a renovation of the current People's property. So those are really the four options. The first two options are, uh, brand new construction, not renovating People's Elementary School. So just to repeat them one more time, uh, the, the, the school building committee has narrowed down the choices. An elementary, a new elementary school K through four near the People's site, a new elementary school K through five near the current People's Elementary School site, a pre-K through four addition to Bourndale Elementary School to have all pre-K through four students attend, one school in the community of Bourne, and a K through four... a K through four renovation of the current People's Elementary School. Those are really, those are the four options at this point in time. The options, I just, I just wanted to make sure, reiterate too, that throughout this entire process, as Superintendent Marks has been discussing, is that the, the options...
as Superintendent Lamaris has been discussing, is that the, the options that were faced, we had many options, I want to say there was a 1.14 different options that were whittled down based on a variety of factors. But the MSBA firmly believes that the community's viewpoints are, as well as the school building, firmly believes the community's input and viewpoints are critical to this process. So absolutely, from the baseline, is always the option of what if we just fix the current school as it is? And, and so we've continued looking at that. There have been other options that were also looked at. I know that the community members have expressed some interest in taking a look at what Sandwich and Mashpee did about, about actually eliminating the school, and moving students to different, maybe moving seven and eight into high school, and so on. We exercise and looked at those options as well, very, very carefully, looking at the current needs of the schools, the student population we have, the growth that we perceive, or the maintenance of the students that we have now, what's best for the teaching environment we have in Bourne as a community. And so I just want to reiterate that this has been a very, very robust process, it's governed by the rules of the MSBA, but in addition to that, by the community input and the spirit of the Bourne School Building Committee.
Mr. Chairman, School Committee, as well, there will be a survey that's coming out for the entire community, it's not just for parents and school-aged children, it's for all members of the community to answer questions. And in there, it's about six questions, and there are questions very specific to priorities, as well as other capital projects within the community of Bourne. We will advertise when it is open, we're going to present it tomorrow evening, which again, you'll be seeing this after that fact, we're presenting it as a draft tomorrow evening, but we will be identifying what dates it will be open, it will be on Survey Monkey, and we will certainly ask anybody and everybody, we'll try to get advertising in newspapers, because we do need that feedback, and we're looking for that feedback for, at a minimum, our March 24th meeting as a school building committee, but also our last forum meeting on March 31st, to really add to the decision-making for the school building committee at, at that point in time. I have to be perfectly clear to everybody, what it's coming down to is a couple of things, it's only coming down to a couple of factors that really need to be deliberated, and really need to be decided by the school building committee, with the input of everybody and anybody. Again, please offer input. It's coming down to, do you support fifth grade coming out of the middle school and being in an elementary school in a new construction project near the current People's site, which in turn means that a, after fourth grade at Bourndale, students would go to a fifth grade in that particular school, and then transition to the middle school. It's also, that's one factor. The other factor is cost, the total cost of the project. Is there a savings in renovation versus new construction? It's going to come down to those decisions, we know that cost is a factor. And then the last one is location, north and south of the canal, two elementary schools, one elementary school. Those are really the three factors the school building committee has to really deliberate, but we need your input. Call anybody on the school building committee, attend the meetings, voice your opinion, because we are looking for, we need your input. So I just wanted to share those particular factors at this point in time.
Okay, and my suggestion would be that if we could just table the deliberation on this until after the hearing, if it's okay, give us a few minutes, because I think we're coming up against our start time. Okay, then item number six, Superintendent Lamaris's annual budget hearing, I would like to begin that, just take a moment for the school committee to recess to the, or at least move on over to the other side, we've got a good deal. Thank you.
Just to let people know, there is a handout up with the, with the agenda and some materials going into the outdoor. Good evening. This is, we're going to open up the public hearing regarding the budget, FY17 budget. I'm going to present information as to how we arrived with the FY17 budget. There is approximately 36 slides in this PowerPoint, I will be covering all of them, some of them are very detailed, and I will uncover certain aspects of them. But I, this is probably the only time that I sit here at this table all alone. This whole budget process is a very extensive process that we go through, it's not an independent, it's not something I create in my office, it's not something that I create at home, it's not even something that I let my kids mess around with, but this is something that we really truly collaborate on together as a group, and we are very excited, once again, to present this to the school committee, and to the community in this public hearing. Please note that the decision on the final number is not this evening, the decision on the budget is not this evening, the decision is actually closer to the April 6th evening, when school committee will decide with a scan, so feedback again, is appreciated and welcome, with the information that you've provided. Okay, so the agenda this evening for each is to present information that's associated with developing an FY17 fiscal year budget. Please understand that Bourne Public Schools does not discriminate on the basis of race, color, age, sex, gender, identity, religion, national origin, sexual orientation, disability, or homelessness. The agenda this evening is we present, again, the pathway, which is developed through the strategic plan, the district improvement plan, then we're going to talk about 365 budget planning, FY16 budget reductions, FY16 restored budget, FY17 budget framework, FY17 budget priorities and concessions, and then obviously there's opportunities for questions. So it all starts with the strategic plan, as you recall, the Senate District and School Accountability Department, from the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education was in our district, and they provided us with extensive feedback regarding our strategic planning and our district improvement planning processes. They really believe that that helps generate our pathway, and where we go as a district and what we provide. Obviously, we know that all of our work is centered around students, but do we have a plan in place, do we have an improvement plan that's associated with that? So again, I won't cover all the information that's in all of these documents, but I think what's extremely important for me to cover is the superintendent's message within the strategic planning document. Keep in mind the strategic planning document is very specific to how you develop a district improvement plan, it's the processes and the components that are important to it. It involves what our, what our schools are about, our mission, our vision, our core values, our guiding themes, and then our school committee objectives, which helps develop our roles. The superintendent's message in the strategic plan, which lends itself to the budget process, is the future for our students, parents, caregivers, staff, and the community will bring its own mix of successes and challenges, but our direction is clear, and we know what we must do. We must have the courage to focus intently on placing students at the heart of everything we do. We must provide the best teaching service and most comprehensive learning solutions available to all of our students. We must commit ourselves to evolve with the changing needs of our students by determining what we can control as an educational community. Through our collaborative, deliberate effort in strategic and improvement planning, we control the objectives and the goals. As we then review and analyze our outcomes through reflective practices, we will model the resolve to identify the calculated adjustments, and make a difference for every student in the Bourne Public Schools. Keep in mind, our students' successes in turn are our successes. I think that is a great introduction to the budget process and to what we do. Keep in mind, student is at the center of what we do. We have to make adjustments. Change is hard, we understand that, but our, our students are changing continuously, our state is changing continuously, our federal government's changing continuously, our needs are changing continuously. So from there, what we do is we develop, we develop the district improvement plan, and district improvement, improvement plan will help guide us through all of the work that we need to do as a school district, including budget planning. Again, I'm not going to go through each and every one of these, but what is, what are the guiding themes around student achievement, what's the initiative, what's helping us with our budget process when we analyze what we're doing budgetarily? It's really curriculum articulation improvement, how do we improve what we're teaching our students and what our students are learning? Assessment, how are we assessing our students and how they're progressing? Do we progress monitor our students, and use, utilize a form of assessment? Science, technology, engineering program update, you heard earlier this evening with program of studies that we have next generation, and we use science standards that were incorporated within our instruction. Again, these are our improvement, this is our improvement plan, these are the things that we're focusing on. Mathematics professional development, as you know, we rolled out a brand-new elementary curriculum, Eureka Math. RTI implementation, how do we respond to our students, how do we progress monitor our students, respond to them when they are struggling academically? Feature reduction and mentoring program, as you know, as the school committee rolled this out this year, a new program around secure mentoring. Entertaining shifts, how are we developing partnerships? And what are our resources, what resources do we have available? District culture, very important to us. We know that our culture is, is reflected and processed by our students, our students end up being a reflection of our culture as a district. And the school building program, we know, we could just talk a few minutes ago about the master school building program for people's elementary school. So now I'm going to get into what is the budget planning look like? The path of, budget planning for us is, we're on a path of continuous improvement, we've talked about this for years now, we have to face the fact that we have to, we have to be on a path of continuous improvement. We have to appreciate that, respect it, and embrace it. So our 365 budget planning is very, very easy to interpret, it means that our budget planning is a 365-day process, it doesn't stop, it doesn't begin, it doesn't end. Oftentimes we'll even refer to budget, budget season, that only means that there are certain requirements and things that need to be done, but the budget planning and budget process is really 365 days a year. It's because we're on a path of continuous improvement. We need to be increasingly efficient and flexible with confidence and optimism, it's going to be in the heart of our budget planning. Our budget planning shapes the many important difficult budgetary decisions we make, we know we can't have everything, we know that going into it. And we deliberate, and we have very deep discussions around our budget planning process, and what we can, we cannot afford. We must improve our core capabilities and strengths to increase the value of education we provide our students. We sit back and we all know, from the superintendent on down, or from down all the way up to the superintendent, that we can always improve, we can always improve. So what's the root of the 365 planning? What do we pay attention to in 365 days a year? We analyze revenue sources and risks to funding. We work on this tirelessly in our office, what are our revenue sources? What money can we take in as a district? What money can the town afford? What does it cost to educate our students? What are the risks involved with it? What are the pitfalls involved with funding? We also scrutinize allocations of funds through budget priorities. We identify priorities, we have a priorities that goes in a very positive direction, and we also have a priorities list that goes in a very negative direction, meaning change in funding in a negative fashion means that our priorities change. We have to plan for either or, we don't just plan for one way. Review fiscal governance and stewardship, we know that we are responsible for the community of Bourne. We're not just responsible for the Bourne Public Schools, we're responsible to every taxpayer in this community. We can be good stewards of the, of the finances for this community, for this school district, in recognition of the governance of our community. Establish responsible economic practices, these are good examples of this, of RASP, reclaim appropriation control program that we've been doing for years, another one is cost savings initiatives that we've been doing for years. What can we continue to target and identify as ways to save money in our district, to take out of our operating funds? Again, we know there's not an endless pool of money. We have to be responsible, but we also have to develop responsible economic practices within our district. Establish accurate and complete fiscal reporting, that's part of the RASP process, because on a regular basis, you're replaying, you're reviewing every line, line by line, and you're projecting. You're establishing accurate and complete fiscal reporting, and you're presenting line and transfers to the school committee. Review data points, indicators for short-term and long-term priorities. What we mean by this could be a number of things. The data points, for example, could be the number of students that are referred for initial evaluations and specialification, it could be the number of students who qualify for Title I services in our district, it could be the number of students who drop out of our school, the number of students who discipline in our schools. Could be how our students perform on state-in-year data testing, it could be how our students perform on progress monitoring, or formative assessment within our classroom, could be any number of data points that we look at, 365 days a year, could be enrollment, could be school choice. I collaborate and listen to ideas, comments, and questions from students, teachers, parents, and community leaders. We always have to have our ears open, we always have to listen to what is out there. What is the interest of the community? What is the interest of our students? What is the interest of our teachers? What is the interest of our school committee? We always have to incorporate that into our 365 budget planning. Meet requirements of local, state, federal initiatives and regulations. As we presented in years past, this has become overbearing and overwhelming in every single way, not just for a public school system, but for small businesses, for anybody and everybody out there. This is not just dealt by us, but it's something that we have to do on a regular basis with the need for requirements. And then through all of that, we have to mitigate competing interests to a long-view perspective. In other words, we know that people want certain things, we know that some things are best for our students, how do we balance that on short-term, long-term, and by, we have to do it by looking at the long view. What is sustainable is really the word for me. Our decisions have to be around sustainability, and trying to provide what's best for our students moving forward. So that's really a, a, the budget planning process, which is, again, I call it a 365 budget planning process. Now looking at the big picture about finances, which is, this is usually a, a slide that's a little bit later, but I figured I'd show this upfront at this point in time, FY17 budget picture, big picture. Our FY16 budget was 287994, which was approved last May at the town, annual town meeting. We know for the failed proposition two and a half override, we've got approximately $350,779 reduced in our budget for this fiscal year, which gives us a final FY16 budget of 29529215. Looking at all of our contractual obligations moving forward, this is still, we still have some contracts that are pending, but we believe this figure represents not only the contracts that we have to negotiate, but also many contractual obligations we have, whether it's through vendors, through bus contracts, we think 556449 represents that in a very healthy manner. Our FY17 minimum administrative recommended budget to the town administrator, which was prior to the, the Christmas holiday, was $21,000,042445. Looking at our entire budget now preliminarily, which is really the presentation this evening, we think with the 556449 added to it, we think that our budget for FY17 is more appropriately placed, and that admin recommended $21,000,005664, which is a $43,219 increase from what was originally recommended prior to all of our detailed work around, around budget planning. We know when we do budget planning, when we're just looking at contractual obligations, which is a big ticket item, we know that we still have priorities with the work that we do, how do we prioritize the needs of our students? We look at that through a process of establishing a list of priorities, which you'll see, and we end by looking at what if we qualify for a Chair I priority, what do we really believe that we're going to recommend to the school committee and to this community as a necessity moving forward? And we believe that that value is $431,000. And again, you'll see that detail in a bit. If we're already asking for $556,449 in contractual obligations, we know fiscally, being fiscal conservatives, but also being fiscally proof of the community of Bourne, that we can add, we cannot add an additional $431,000 to that request, or get close to a million-dollar request. We administratively don't feel that that's appropriate. Would we love that? Absolutely. Would we say no if you offered it to us? Absolutely no. So what we do for our budgetary process, again, with the priorities- So what we do for our budgetary process, again, with the prioritization up and down, we know that we can identify some concessions to help mitigate that tier one increase for our fiscal budget. It's not without pain. Concessions on throwaways. This is our budget prioritization process that we've done from year to year. Concessions mean that they are less important than the tier one recommendation moving forward. That's our recommendation. You may feel differently. You may not like it. But that's what we believe to bring to you, the school committee. Again, you'll see the detail for that. That provides a variance of roughly around $29,000. Meaning we've identified more concessions of value concessions than that we did in tier one. That only provides a low buffer of around $29,000 for any influx within our tier one and the concessions that we identified. Okay, so looking at our fiscal year budgets over the years. And I've said this and I presented this to finance committee, to you as a school committee, there's a part of me that's very proud of this, that I feel that we really worked hard, we really been fiscally sound as a school district. When I was hired in 2010, it was one of the number one priorities upon my hiring, was to move to a fiscal, least sound district. Then the other part, other part of me says, am I doing enough to advocate for the born public schools? Because it's a surprise to me to look at a six-year span and our total budget increase is 1.6% or $355,000, $356 if you would like to round it up. I think it's pretty remarkable. And again, I'm very proud of it, but are we doing enough? And I think we're in a position now where we, where we're asking and recommending something, we're asking for certain things, and they have value to them, there's certainly being behind it, there's certainly value behind it, and there certainly should be in this community trust behind the request as well. This particular slide I like and I share, and I've worked a little bit harder on this because I wanted it to make more sense from year to year. I think people have struggled with this when they take a look at it. What this slide really represents is obviously a bunch of lines that go up and down. But what it really represents is where we are fiscally for born public schools, where the town of Born is, and this is the new piece that I put in, I didn't look at the overall budget for the town of Born, I just identified the GFOB, the general fund operating budget for the town of Born. We also looked at the upper K tech budget increases in assessments of the town. And then we've also identified the shared cost increases to the town. So let me try to add a little more specificity to that. The blue line clearly represents the born public schools, which is roughly the 1.6% increase over time from 2011. Now, please note that I made this, I said to provide this data in the best interest, I leveled everyone in 2011 at the starting point. I could go back in years, I chose not to do that. I started in 2011, which is the fiscal year that I inherited from me in here. And then I started from that point. The blue line clearly represents the born public schools. 2012, we had a major reduction. 2013 fiscal year, we had a nice increase. 2014, 15, lower increases. 2016, these past years, we've already seen, we've reduced our budget by $350,000 and now we're asking for 556. Looking at upper K tech, because we are consistently, and I'm not saying that it's wrong, but we are lumped together as one school payment for the community of Born. We know over time, we knew that there was a large bump in our assessment of upper K tech. That was for the fiscal year 2015. Keep in mind that assessment from upper K tech follows the year after the students are enrolled. We identified that there would be somewhat of a correction to that process over time and you see it now. You're seeing that their increases have come down. Shared cost is this other entity that is shared between the town and the school when it comes to health insurance and other benefits. That whiteish line is strictly the increase to shared costs over time. Now the town of Born, GFOB, general fund operating budget, is a reflection of the town budget minus the school budget increases and decreases, minus the upper K assessment, minus the shared cost. If I saved it for last, it represents the town of Born's budget. Again, I want to be clear, it's, the red line is less the school budget, less upper K, less shared cost. This is a good reflection, you know, in education, one thinks we really worked hard with our students and staff, we've got to compare each other. But I think at one point in time, you have to have one form of comparison somewhere along the line. This represents where Born fits with the rest of the K schools for percentage increases starting with FY12. Born public schools, with our increase of 2.6% this fiscal year, 556, represents a 1.6% increase in FY12. The next one is sandwiched at 6.8, down with a 10.8 over the same period of time, Nashville 13.2 over the same period of time, Greerham 13.9 over the same period of time, Frostville 14.9 over the same period of time. Very important data points. FY16, I just want to make sure that we're on the same page regarding the FY16 reductions. In order to get into FY16, when we asked the town meeting last May for our budget, these were reductions to the above. Free FY16 concessions, pre-two and a half override, these were concessions we made to try to balance the budget last year. We cut a full-time literature teacher, a full-time technology ESP, a full-time network administrator, and a full-time custodian. That was before May 2015, before we had the budget improved. Post failed two and a half override, whether that, how did that impact us again? We lost a shared network administration with the town of Born. We lost a full-time software integration manager. We lost a technology ESP and a .2 elementary ESP. Again, that's right around the FY16 budget planning process. This is all important as we get into FY17 and what FY17 looks for us. If you recall in past years, I used to call this the budget story. What is the story? What is the budget telling us? What is the story telling us? These are the positions that were restored in FY16. I want to thank the community of Born, I want to thank the finance committee, the board of selectmen, the school committee, to give us some reprieve from the reductions that we faced and identified priorities in our district that were important to the function and the operation of our district. This including adding an ESP, a guidance counselor at the middle school, elementary health teacher, circuit breaker liaison, adding back some supplies expenses, fuel for buses, parent transportation, and then legal fees. Going into FY17, getting more now into the budget planning again and the budget framework, what are our offsets? These are offsets within our budget, we identify these. We've been identifying these over the years in our budget planning. They are color-coded in the large spreadsheet or the small spreadsheet that you have. You'll see from FY15, 16, 17, you'll see that we've had an increase in our offsets. You'll see the fluctuation as to where they've increased, where they've come from, and where they haven't. RAS, you'll see RAS, that's reclaim appropriation control program. In previous years, when we first started here, we were able to reclaim funds to help offset some of our collaborative tuitions within the fiscal year. But our margins for reclaiming appropriations have become so minor that they actually just paid for some of the overruns in some accounts. And so they are part of our annual fiscal management, but there is no value in the end to help offset our collaborative tuitions, which means we actually have to add that value back into our budget, if you think about it. You see the school choice has certainly been a process for us. I think, you know, when you look at military litigation, the reason why it is reflected here, even though everybody here should know that we did not receive it last year, the reason it's reflected here is because we were saving it from one fiscal year and spending it in the next fiscal year. We were not spending it in the same fiscal year. So it allowed us to have a one-year gap in those offsets. So this sheet doesn't really reflect that the community of Born lost over $700,000 in military litigation in one year. It doesn't show it or reflect it because of our fiscal management. Because when we first received it back in 2012 fiscal year, 2012, we didn't run out and spend it. So that's why it is reflected in this offset sheet, it's been reflected in every one of our budgets. Class saving initiatives, again, this is extremely integral, integral part of our budget planning process. Some of these are repeats over time. What this really is, this identifies ongoing costs that we've been able to pull out of our operating funds. Right now, we're a little over $500,000, which means on an annual basis, we've been able to remove some of these by some of these initiatives, class saving initiatives. Remember from year to year, we talked about these? So it was at the top, some of these have happened. But keep in mind, we're proud of the fact that this is removed from our recurring costs on annual basis. Some of the bottom ones are stuff that we're still working on. So for example, when we look at new gas heating, multi-year contract, we actually, Mr. Donnie actually co-issued a contract that pays less than what we're paying at the time for a couple of years. We look at wifi costs at schools, we reduce, and this was part of, you know, class savings, because this was part of our pro two and a half override, failed override reduction. But we know recurring costs, we reduced our cellular services in our district by $16,000 on an annual basis. We're looking to upgrade the management system, the energy management system at former middle school, we know we're working closely with CBA. For that, we know that that's going to be an annual saver for us. We had, for the first time in a number of years, we had all the ski trap survey replaced at Peoples Elementary School, which has helped save money within that building around heating classes. And this summer, we're looking at changing the lights in the born high school aquarium, as well as some hallways for some more savings. Again, an important part of our budget process is class saving initiatives. What do we do to try to recapture funds as an allocator, the operating expenses from year to year, that we know will help us in the process of being on that path of continuous So what is the born public school's fiscal year FY17 framework look like? We identified the maintenance of effort, I've already identified that for you, it's That's all of our contractual obligations moving forward. That is what we believe will meet our contractual obligations. Now, obviously, we have finalized two contracts that I mentioned. We're going to honor, because those will be negotiated in good faith, we'll honor the results of those. If it goes up or goes down, we'll honor that. If it goes up, we'll have to identify more concessions. We understand that. We're not sitting here saying that it's going to be 556 and no more. We're not saying that. But we believe that that represents our contractual obligations moving forward. And if it doesn't, again, we'll have to identify more concessions to beat what was negotiated in good faith. What are our budget priorities? Again, an ongoing list that gets adjusted. Our entire list of budget priorities is $691,000. Again, we know with the community of Born, we're not going to add $691,000 to a fiscal year budget. Therefore, requesting $1.1 million. But we have to identify budgetary concessions. We've identified through priorities what our concessions could be going into FY17 without compromising teaching and learning within our district. But then we have to go back and reprioritize our priorities. Because if we can only identify $460,000, we are not going to put forth $691,000. We have to identify and reprioritize what are our priorities moving to the fiscal year that we want to recommend to you as a school committee and to the community. So therefore, it ends up at the value of 21,000,005664. So what are our FY365 budget priorities? What have we heard over 365 days? What have we learned over 365 days? Keep in mind, when we're talking about 365 days, we're not talking about intimate conversations from day to day, we're talking about over time. We know that our behavior and our scanning system of beings is built over time, is built over patterns, is built over data. The budget priorities approach creates a strategic framework for the investment decisions and learning teaching for born public schools. This prioritization is used to guide our budget proposal to the born school committee and then to communicate that budget to the public. What are our priorities? You'll notice that there is an asterisk next to some of these. Some of that was part of the restorative budget. So some of that, I want to be clear, we've identified this as ongoing priorities in our budget. It's not as simple as getting the restorative budget and saying that we have it for life. We want to keep identifying it as a priority for us, for born public schools. So the born public school guidance counselor is a priority. And these are in order. A teacher of specialized instruction and special education at born high schools for post-secondary transition. We have a number of students that are aging between 18 and 22. By law, we're required to educate all students from 18 to 22 who are identified with disabilities and acquired in athletic program. We know we have a number of students and it's a program that we need to start. And we need to keep our students within our community. We have elementary school health and wellness teacher. Pre-K through 4 curriculum writing. This was in our FY16 budget. This is a position we did not fill. We have the risk of the two and a half override fail. Two and a half override failed. We knew we had to reduce our budget by $350,000, so we did not fill that requirement. We are bringing it back again as a priority. With the major math resource, with the major writing resources, with all the work we're doing curriculum-wise, we continue to need assistance and direction at the pre-K through 4 level. We've identified a career dropout prevention credit recovery teacher at born high school. But this one, I want to remind you that over the years, we've reduced a number of staff numbers at born high school. If you look at the budget spreadsheet, you'll normally identify that from the fiscal years that are identified on that spreadsheet. Now we're identifying needs that we have at our school. If one student drops out of born high school, we're too small a district, if one student drops out of born high school, we've lost. If one student filling requires a recovery course, better recovery course during his school year to move from grades nine to 10, we should be providing that. Our students need a greater connection to career. We do have someone who's working on internships, but this is an actual instructional position. We've heard that many of our graduates have identified their future based off of career planning and career coursework that they've done prior to in born high school in a position that was eliminated a number of years ago. We believe that one person can try to do all of these things for us, for the betterment of our students in born high school. We've identified an elementary learning coach, very specific to RTI, responds to what I call instruction. It's commonly known as response to intervention. I have a former colleague of mine said, I don't know how you respond to intervention. You actually respond to instruction, which is an intervention. So I use response to intervention. We believe with the number of students that we have and the students' needs, that we need someone to assist classroom teachers who are really focused on the instruction, teaching, and learning, to assist them in building better professional development around response to intervention, or what you'll here commonly call tier one and tier two interventions. We've also identified admin, Desi State importing. As you recall, we did have a software integration manager to get all of our state importing. We believe this is a method to meet the requirements of state importing without bringing back a software integration anywhere. We also have professional development to make that math resource because we're expanding it. We've had great success at the elementary level for grade five, we're actually extending it to grade six next year. And the last item is the Newman Association of Schools and Holsters, or MEAS, we are due for our accreditation process next year. But we have to identify a value. This is not new information to you as a school committee for the community. This is something that we've identified for a couple of years now in preparation for. So the natural question is, what's the value of all this? So the guidance counselor is 49470, teacher of special education at the high school. We always budget $65,000, it's right around the master's six step, master's five step. We always budget around that. Master's five step. We always budget around that. Obviously, if there's some savings in there, we will look for it. But our job is to hire the best and the brightest teacher to teach students in Born. Teacher of health and wellness, pre-K through four curriculum director, teacher for credit dropout career, elementary learning coach. Admin, DESI, state reporting. We believe we have an $8,000 fix for somebody who did this a little bit more in a full-time position at over $8,000 as administrator. Professional development with major map resources, and then the MEAS accreditation is roughly, we're budgeting $20,000. We obviously hope it's less than that, but we want to be, we want to be on the right side of that. Now, as I mentioned earlier, there were $691,000 in priorities. These were the ones that lead to tier two, ended up in tier two. Early college experience program for our students. Professional development for the writing process, pre-K through six. Building-based professional development, a 1.0 full-time kindergarten teacher. An actual dropout prevention program, reading program for our students. We identified this last year as a priority. We're still identifying this priority moving forward. A full-time equivalent central office data clerk and grounds and maybe this full-time person to assist us with our grounds. What were the values of these? Roughly $260,000. Again, it's a non-part of our recommendation, but it gives you the long view, gives you what we're looking at moving forward. And what we would conceivably recommend to the school committee if we had all the money in the world. So here's the hard part. How do we identify our concessions? You know, the easy way to say this, we can't live without any of this. We don't want to live without any of this. But again, we know we can ask this community for $1.1 million. We know that there's a track record of not getting a million dollars for the schools. Right? One or different. We know that. So how do we identify a budget concessions moving forward? What are the items? What made the tier one priority list and had a somewhat of an equal or opposite that made the concessions list? For terminology purposes. These are them. Representing $431,000. First item, and these are listed in priorities as well, being risks. First item is a seven through 12 communities director in this particular position at the high school. So again, if you want to do the juxtaposition process in your head, we recommended a pre-K through four director. We're saying that we are willing to reduce, we think in the best interest of the budgetary process, to be fiscally prudent, to reduce this administrator. We believe there's a way to try to pull us together and still have some of this responsibility completed by another administrator in our district, which would be the assistant principal of the high school. Two full-time equivalent elementary teachers. One full-time equivalent social worker. Building-based supplies. I'll talk about that in a second. Building-based professional development. Building-based software. Technology consult support. Appoint you FTE library ESP. Early college experience program, the ECP program, additional $7,000. And utilities because of the gas contract, and we're looking for the possibility of having the energy system at the middle school converted for, with C-VAC. We think that we'll be saving some there. We're not sure about the timeline on that. We'd rather project that risk. But as I said, these are in order of risk to the budgetary fiscal priorities within our annual operating budget. Total value is $462,34. I'm not sure if I presented this slide in the past, but this is a system that we moved to. This is what I would call a classed initiative that we established. When I first came, it was an imbalance as far as resources within our schools. The imbalance was that the supply accounts weren't based on something. So we changed that to base it on actual bodies within the school. How many students do we have? What will we value a certain supply to for that particular student? Now, we've made some adjustments up and down on this. But if you look at the bottom right-hand side, this, our supply account, which I presented at the prop two and a half override process, represents about $245,000 out of a $21 million budget. It's not a lot of money. So we'd say we don't cut supplies. We're really, we're already at the bottom. We're cutting some more. But we've made some adjustments in these accounts because we've become very better, very good, those are great words. We've become much better at our process for purchasing. As you saw in the classed initiatives, we do tech collaborative, we do comparative shopping, we try to buy in bulk. We do a number of things within our district. But again, we established a value, so that we do, we do have, we can manage it, we can budget it. And it was fair and equitable across our schools. Now, you see some variance, some variance in values, because we know, and we've talked about this sometimes, bigger kids, bigger supplies. So you see some variance as far as, you know, the high school level student, textbook maybe is a little bit more expensive. But as you know, we're getting away from more textbooks and looking at things more electronically. We've got some reductions in those accounts over the years. One of the things that I'm still, I continue to be proud of that we identified is if we require our students to do a curriculum-based field experience, or as you and I knew when we grew up, a field trip. And we thought it was important. We shouldn't be asking our parents to pay for it. We're asking them to double the pay. They already paid for the taxes and for the students to go to school. We don't need to ask them. We don't need to fee our parents for that. So if we thought it was important enough for our students to do a curriculum-based field experience or field trip, we should be budgeting for that. It's not perfect. We pay for 100% for every one of these? No. But we should be identifying a certain value and mitigating the cost to a family. If you recall, about three or four years ago, we did a study of what it costs out-of-pocket expenses for a parent going to the Born Public Schools from pre-kidergarten all the way through. And if they paid for everything, it was roughly $19,000 out of their pocket. If they paid for everything in Born Public Schools, they paid for pre-kidergarten tuition, kindergarten tuition, field trips, Washington trip, nature's classroom, you name it, I'm just naming the biddies, but if you paid for all that, it's roughly $19,000 from your, out of your pocket, just for fees that we charge in Born Public Schools. We don't want to do that. We don't want to continue to do that. If I had my brothers, I'd give rid of every fee that we have. But right now, it's a product of fiscal management of our budget. Again, we feel it's important enough to be field-based curriculum experience out of the learning process, out of experience for our students. We should not be asking our parents to pay for those. We should be budgeting for those. You'll notice on that, there is a variance there, or some people may identify a holding power there for Borndale Elementary School compared to others. Just because it is the one outlier school for us. Other schools can go around campuses and share campuses, you can go to the innovation studio at the high school here. When there are field trips that are specific to Massachusetts or to the community born, walking down to the canal is easier on this side of the bridge versus that side of the bridge. So we have to hire buses. We have to provide buses for those crews. Now, I know that the number one question is, if it would be for me, how are we going to reduce two elementary school classroom teachers? How can we possibly do that, let's put it that way? I know I would ask that about you. Well, we've, again, data points, 365, it's not a new data point for us. We've been monitoring this for a couple of years now. What do our class sizes look like at the elementary level? This is our projection with the reduction of two elementary teachers for next school year. At Borndale, this is moving two elementary teachers. Currently, at one of our elementary schools' deals, we have five teachers in first grade and five teachers in second grade. In third and fourth, we have four teachers. At Borndale Elementary School, we have four teachers per grade. So if we had everyone have four teachers per grade, this would be our projection for class size. Now, is this going to be perfect? No. Are there some demographic bumps here and there? Absolutely. But I have to tell you, looking at these numbers, we're in pretty good shape. Do I want to lose those two elementary teachers? Absolutely not. Why would I? What I, why would I? But are there needing needs? Are there other needs in our district? Other priorities? I still think looking at this class size across all of our grades in our two elementary schools, we're in pretty good shape. So I want to go back and talk about a couple of the other concessions, the risks involved. We talked about the communities director. We talked about the elementary teachers. The social worker, again, if you want to do a juxtaposition protocol, whatever boards are in your head. We talked about adding an additional high school teacher for special education. This position is at the high school. This is a retirement. This is what we're prioritizing the program versus the social worker. Would I like a social worker? Would Christina Stewart like a social worker? Would the high school staff like a social worker? Yes. But we have to identify priorities. Building-based supplies. With some of our reductions, it's not a population reduction. It's a reduction in the value. I talked about how there's, we're relying less on textbooks and more on technology. So there are reductions across all of our supply lines of roughly $26,000 that we've identified as being, again, a lesser priority to meet our significant priorities on our capital needs improvement for the Born Public Schools. Building-based professional development, this was very specific to things that administrators recommended or identified as needs within their building. We provide, we provide professional development for those needs. The $20,000 actually wipes out all of those lines. This does not represent our contractual obligations to teachers to continue to support them in bettering their craft and their availability through funds for their personal needs, for their professional needs. For their, what I meant by personal needs is their personal growth, professional growth. Building-based software, we've worked harder to have a less reliance on purchasing software and more public domain software. So we're going to reduce those lines. Again, that's, this is, it's $5,000 per building, four buildings. We're wiping those lines out to meet our priority needs. Technology consult support, we've moved to the cloud in many ways. We're almost completely there. It's been quite an endeavor, but we believe our reliance on vendors to support us. And some of our, again, internal Microsoft Office products is changing, that we're relying on the cloud, which is Google Drive, Google for Education. We believe we can do some more restructuring around our elementary library ESP. Our early college experience program. Reason why it's at the bottom of this is because we don't want to decimate the program. This will be the first year that we have students who actually graduate from the early college experience program, and they're four Cs. Represented, represented Born Public Schools, who will graduate with a high school diploma and a two-year associate's degree. We will have nine students. We believe all nine, but we know eight of them are on track to receive a high school diploma and a two-year associate's degree that ended this school year. At twice at the bottom, we don't want to decimate this program. What a great opportunity for the Born community, for students in this community. And then utilities, I already talked about the risks, you know. So those are the concessions we identified. I talked about the reprioritization, which I could go over again if you have questions about it. And so, in conclusion, or as a conclusion, the administrative team is recommending to the school committee for the school year 2016-17, well, for the FY17 administrative recommended budget, a budget of $21,085,664 for the taxpayers of Born. In the handouts, in all school committee members, you have, this is not new, we've been working on this for years. You have our entire budget, line by line. You have it starting with the fiscal year 2011, all the way through to this year. It's roughly six pages long. You have, if you're looking at it, you have column G, which is the administrative recommended budget that we're working on. Put us in a position to recommend to the town administrator what our FY17 budget would look like prior to, again, the Christmas holiday. Each column, you have all of our offsets. Every offset we have is identified. What it's paying for, what it's offsetting, and what the value is. Then column I, you have our administrative recommended adjustments. So if it's something that's in a grayish color, that's an actual reduction in that line. If it's something that's a yellowish color, that's an addition to that line. So you'll see lots of details that weren't presented in the bigger picture this evening. For example, you see adjustments for $400 here, $200 there. Some of those lines, we've made adjustments. For example, if you look at numbers, line number 16 through 19, those are print centers. We're at the end of a three-year cycle around our lease agreement. We're looking for a new lease agreement. We believe it would be prudent for us to add somewhere around 2% increase and a change in that value. So that's why you see an increase of $600 for Born High School, $400 for Peoples Elementary School, $600 for Born Middle School, $400 for Borndale Elementary School, for $2,000 for all of our print centers. If it comes in less, great. But again, we didn't want to leave every value, we didn't want to leave any value not identified in this process, in this budget. You'll see the addition of staff. You'll see our FTEs from FY16 to FY17. You'll see on the backside, we're not increasing our FTEs, we're actually reducing our FTEs through this process. Everything in column F for FY16, if it's dark blue with white numbers, were lines that were impacted by the two and a half override. You'll see a percentage in the notes. The percentage is the contractual obligation moving forward. You'll see that we budgeted a certain amount of contractual obligations for those that are still pending negotiations. Again, we realize that those could go up. We realize that those could go down. Whatever they are, we know that fiscally, we'll have to balance that and manage that. You'll see certain X-out boxes. Some of those are data points that we no longer have, or we didn't have in the beginning. Once again, you'll see roughly represented on this document, rough number 285 lines. So once again, that's the detail behind our recommendation for $21,085,664 for fiscal year 17 moving forward. So I'm at the point now where it's open for questions. Or comments? Hope you want to just take a break for school committee to come back up, or you want to stay there and ask questions? Do you have a slide?
Well, that's the thing. We did this last time. We kind of went back, and then we all had to turn around, and there were slides and questions. Plus, I'd like to walk around with the microphone. So anybody in school committee have any questions first? Just a brief, just a brief explanation of how this works, folks. The school committee looks at this budget through the hearing. We're actually hearing it for the most part for the first time. Certainly, budget service is an opportunity to work with the administration for a monthly basis. And that's one of the good parts about the proactive tenure on the school committees, is you are involved with budget planning on a monthly basis, not just as the budget season arrives. So we are hearing this for the first time. We'd like to take a look and have an opportunity to digest some of the numbers. Our deliberation in public is really done at the next meeting, when we'll actually vote the budget. So that's generally in April. But certainly, there's an opportunity to ask questions and maybe get some clarified questions. I have a couple here and there. But I wanted to open up to any of the people in the audience that might have some any questions at this point, anything that they need clarified.
I have a question regarding the.
Let me get to the mic.
I have a question. I have a question regarding the elementary learning coach. Is there a job description for that position, and how much of that position would include direct service to students?
Great question. Right now, there is not a job script. There is a job description for a learning coach. But this is something that we've identified as a need, RTI. We saw it in our district improvement plan, that we need to continue to work on RTI. It's really not direct service to students, other than co-teaching, supporting teachers. It's really building the capacity of the classroom teacher to address RTI tier one and tier two. It obviously will involve connections with students, teaching students. It may be modeling a lesson, it may be modeling classes. It's exactly what our current learning coaches do, but it's very specific to RTI. One more question?
It's not a question. It's more of a statement. Excuse me, Peter Meyer, our board of selectmen. In conversation with the town administrator earlier today, he has recommended the number that you recommended on the screen. It's 20,800, yeah, the 21,805, thank you, saying that that is a number that he could work with. I mean, yes, that's his number, but what I would like to see is the school committee's number, what they want. number, what they want. You know, they know what's best for these students. These, they may say they're the born public school students, but they are part of the town of born, and we're all one big piece of the pie. You know, we're all one big budget number, $57 million. Schools are part of it, but they're everyone's students. And I think, if you have, if you think we need more money to make some of this a reality, we will maybe find a way to make it happen. I mean, we are able to find money with turnbacks, money that will turn back, that we can miss back, we have one-time revenues. Now what, you know, even as we're sitting here last October at town meeting, you had the chairman of the finance committee saying she wanted to take a second look at our budget numbers for FY16. Well, I think we need to look harder before we come out with a final number, because what we want from our school system is going to thrive. And a school system that thrive means a great economy, it means that people want to stay in the town, and, you know, if we ever substanize schools, then people are going to leave. People are going to leave, our property values go down, and it's an interconnect. We should have what's in the best interest of the born public school students period. And if your numbers are a little bit higher than that, well, go out there, assess priorities over all the big picture to see what needs to be cut to make it happen, but I think we need, you know, as elected school committee members and as the school leadership, works in the best interest of the students. And I'll be waiting to hear from you all what you think is best on your final number. Thank you.
Thank you, Slavon Meyer. Mr. Chair? Thank you, Peter. I appreciate the comments, and I just want to, I didn't really present it this way, but because of your comments, I want to make sure that I address certain parts of our planning process, our 365 budget planning. We just experienced this past year, a failed 2 and F override. It's not something we, as a school district, or a school, I'm sure the school committee enjoyed in any way, because we believe in what we're presenting, what we're building here for born public schools. If you recall on one of the slides, we talked about the long view. I have yet to hear differently that the long view looks at a possible 2 and F override in FY2018. So I appreciate what you're saying for us to, if we need more to ask for more, but I'm not going to ask or recommend more, only have to cut it, or to face another failed 2 and F override. I'm going to be dreary prudent with my administrative team as far as what we're looking at for the long view. If the fiscal climate was different for FY18, and if I hear something different, maybe we could get more into that open dialogue that you're talking about. Now, obviously, we will do whatever the school committee asks us to do, but I am representing the administrative team, the district, from an operational perspective, and unless the long view changes for the community born, I don't want to recommend something that we have to just cut back again. So I just wanted to give you that feedback.
Hi, Dan. Thank you for going through this as detailed as you did. I still struggle with a few things. ECEP costs $70,000 for nine, for nine students.
We budget, we budget around $100,000 for ECEP. We do it in an offset for school choice. It's established as a program to accept students into our school system in the ninth grade year in preparation for the ECEP program. We're still in what I would call different stages. We're only in our second year of it, but we have, the only students that are enrolled in it right now, there's one student from out of our district. The rest are born public schools, born community students. It's an absolutely incredible program. Now, with that said, the reason why it's also there for a reduction is that we're also working with 4Cs to restructure the cost of that program. That was an initial cost to get it off the ground. We believe that that cost can come down. I'm not sure what your question is, but I just wanted to...
I'm just trying to go line by line on this. A few things that stuck out to me with the $70,000 cost for ECEP, the cost for a 3K 34 curriculum director, when, again, I've raised this question before, why do we need grade-specific or segment-specific curriculum directors when it used to be all one in the one office? It's $85,000 for a person to come in whose job that already belongs, to whom that job already belongs, and yet we want to have an $85,000 person doing that job. The other question I had was another administrator to do, to collect data, when, with all the data that we collect and all the electronic testing that we do, aren't those, isn't that information available just from a report in the computer? I, I'm concerned that we're top-heavy in data collectors, people who aren't teaching in the classroom, who aren't directly helping the students in their day, but are shifting the focus of work to data collection. I'm not even seeing mentoring as much as I am seeing if a teacher's struggling with affecting or implementing something in the classroom. I can see teacher coaches there, but I'm struggling with some top-heavy positions, it seems. So I'd like some more clarification on why those people are being, being right, especially with, I mentioned this before, a thousand less students than five years ago. Thank you.
Okay. I appreciate your questions. Couple of points. First of all, we don't have a thousand less students than five years ago. The other point, too, is I think that here, there's a little bit of a minimization of that role at the elementary level for the administrative position around curriculum. There's an incredible amount of work that is around curriculum development, curriculum rollout, decision-making, and I know that you've asked a question about the administrative top-heavy. Please, we are very conscientious of that. That's why we're recommending eliminating an administrative position, foreign administrative position. We're not adding. The data clerk is not, I'm not sure what, what conceptually you're thinking of the data clerk. The data clerk is, is an office person that's very specific around that data. The more we automate, the information we have within our systems is only as good as the data that's entered. Right now, we have multiple data entry points, and some of that data is not productive and has not been working, but it's not specific to assessment, it's specific to data. We have a very thin central office. We have a very small central office. You're welcome to come by anytime and see the three, four, or five people that work there. It's not, you know, again, if you look at budget increases and stuff, we're, we're not overspending. We're not. Going back to the $70,000, that's a reduction of ECEP. That's not an addition. We're recommending using $70,000 out of ECEP. That's a reduction. That's not an addition. Total cost of ECEP, we're a little under $100,000.
But again, for nine students.
For nine precious students in born who are getting their associate's degree.
I don't, I don't discount what the opportunity provides for them. I'm concerned about the cost that could be kept here in, in the town rather than that free opportunity those students have. Don't get me wrong. It's, you're right, it's right for the, for those nine kids who've chosen that program. That's great, but it's nine students at $100,000.
The cost of, $100,000 represents a per-people expenditure, which is what it costs us to educate every student who's in born. That's where the value comes from. It's the same value for every student in born. We roughly pay $14,000, $15,000 per student to educate them in born. I, again, I appreciate it. It's an opportunity. When I first, when we talk about a 365 budget planning process, and I believe you were part of these meetings when I was first hired, when we sat on stage, we heard overwhelmingly that we do very little to address our accelerated burdens. ECEP was a program to address the needs of students who are prepared for that level of instruction at the college level. We really want to support those students. Now, again, when we go through our budget process, we know that there's hard decisions to be made, and we know there are. Again, we're reducing that program by $70,000. If we have students that are still interested in that, we're going to, going to try to find a way to do it, but we're also working with 4Cs to restructure the cost of that so that it isn't a per-people expenditure moving forward. But that was a model we, we worked on. If you recall, I went around the state looking at other programs across the state. We're, we're the only district on the Cape that has access to that program in 4Cs. Only district. No other district has access to that program. That's a feather in the cap of this community. It's a huge feather in the cap of this community. And again, if the school committee feels that that program should be eliminated, again, I, I will certainly advocate for it. I will certainly throw everything at school committee as to why, and I would justify it. But again, we're recommending reducing it by $70,000, that budget line, to help pay for other priorities.
Are the accelerated students in that, in the ECEP, or are there other students who take care of the ECEP?
The question is, are there accelerated students in that, or are there other students in that? I'm not, I'm not sure what you're...
Well, the kids who are accelerated, who wanted more challenging work three years ago, those, those aren't the kids that are in the ECEP program.
Those are absolutely the kids that are in the ECEP program. There was an application process. There was a minimum requirement for them to enroll. There's been ongoing monitoring. I, I mean, I, I don't, I'm not as opposed to it, but I'm sure that Principal Sutner could speak. If you want to stop in at born high school office and talk, I know you're here sometimes, if you want to stop in and talk to her about ECEP. It's actually outlined in great detail on our website as well, the application process, the criteria for getting in. I'm sure President John Cox would certainly have to say in conversation about it, too, at 4Cs.
How many kids did you have apply for that program?
We originally had somewhere around 13, 14 kids apply for, and we're at nine at this
I have a question again. I don't expect that you would have an answer for, but I'm not throwing down there anyways. As you know, I have a home in Florida, and the Florida schools or county schools, say you have about 20, sometimes 20 schools in county. In Florida, schools have business partnerships that give them money. So my first part of that question is, do we foresee that anywhere in Massachusetts? And my second question would be, would it be advantageous to have a grant writer, somebody who's a full-time grant writer on staff?
Mr. Brown, thank you for the question. Easy to suggest, but we only have so much money, and, you know, we do have somebody who does write grants for us from a district level, but we also have other administrators that write grants, too, and also teach, we know teachers write grants, too, so we'll support any of the grant writing. As far as the partnership, if you look at the district improvement plan, that was one of our initiatives. And we have been trying to establish partnerships, but it's, it's, it's a whole process. There's a lot involved in that. You know, one of the more recent was, more recent partnerships is work, continuing to work with MMA, with 4Cs, but it's also working with local businesses. We had a recent meeting with representatives from Hydroid to come and work, you know, we would love to give them the naming rights to born high school. Just joking, I'm kidding.
I do have a story.
That's not a story, but, but no, we are, we're trying to build partnerships. You know, there, there's not a good track record in our state around partnerships for that. There are communities that do start like an educational foundation, which is more of a vehicle for that partnership. Born does not have a born educational foundation, which is really primarily started by parents or by a special interest group. It's not started by the school system. To build those partner, those business or those local relationships that would fund, what I used to call in prior districts, is they would fund the ideas, because we could only go so far as a public school entity funding ideas, but foundations, educational foundations really fund ideas that people have, and that's more of kind of what you're talking about with the grant. But I don't have a specific answer, you know, compared to Florida, but, but it is something that's on a district improvement plan, is to continue to forge partnerships within our
Okay. Does the school, do you have any specific slide-based questions? Otherwise, we can migrate back to the table and maybe continue. First of all, I'd like to say thank you to Superintendent Lamarche for your presentation. Every year gets better. It's more informative. Certainly for me, this is my fifth presentation as a member of the board, and I just wanted to say also to the public, thank you for your comments. Many of the comments that you bring up, things that we have discussed and have concerns, but it's great to know that the public has some questions as well that are aligned with some of the topics that we bring up, because a lot of times at the end of the day, it's just a matter of what makes the best sense for the, for our students. How do we provide? And I think one of the best graphs, and even I'm going to celebrate back, but before our graph, it's what the, you know, the impacts that bear in mind, that we have to bear in mind when we're developing a budget, and it's the general fund of the town. It's also the shared costs of which we participate in. And then considering the fact that we are, the town of born supports education in a variety of ways, including upper K, upper K tech school, it's a partnership that we work with to educate the students of born, and it's something we have to consider. They're both governed and operated under very different rules, and so our budget is specifically borne by the community of the town. It really is a function of that, and it's something we've worked with closely. I will say, too, thank you to Slavon Meyer for his comments. We have been working very closely with town officials, Slav, Slavon, the town administrator, the team leads with the chair of the school, of Slavon as well, to help educate and advocate for the schools, for the needs of the schools specifically. And, but at the end of the day, 1.6% of an increase from 2011 to 2017, which I've taken this job, Steve, if I told you that's what you're going to work on it. So we have some work to do, and I think that, I'd love to hear any comments on the board, but for, as I spoke earlier, we're looking to deliberate a little bit more about this and sort of invoke a number in it.
Thanks, Chris. Okay, so I'm happy about a couple of things as we look at the priorities. So for example, we have understood, well, from feedback from parents, from staff members about the importance of the guidance council at the middle school, about the importance of helping all this teacher who's a good, they've been backing to the recommendation, supported already, frankly, in the rebuild, which is great. The dropout and credit recovery position and process, and you think back to students is huge. The math resource for grade six, huge. Couple of the things are unavoidable. I, I need to note that we have drawn back, when I first started here, this is, I guess I'm getting along, 200, six years ago, we had, I think, 21 administrative positions overall. We have 16, if my count was correct, if I were taking down, 12, 16, whatever it is. The point is that, that the reporting requirements, I'd love to say that they are not as luminous as they were even six years ago, but I'm going to be blunt. They're, oh, he's saying something, okay, great. But they're large, they're a lot larger. And the data mining is not going away. Let's be crystal clear on that, because every facet of government working on the federal side certainly is predicated on data collection, data analysis, and data mining. It's just not going to go away. It's a requirement, the laws and appropriations that give us funds to work with also come with monster strings attached, and we have that obligation. We have, I think, to our detriment, as we look at, for instance, like an $8,000 stipend to increase our reporting capacity, these things, they have to happen. There's no truth about it. I'm struck by a couple of other things. The enrollments figures, as we look ahead to the school year 17, even with the changes in staffing to basically be at fourth grade per school, although I... Although obviously, the number that sticks out most prominently is the grade two at the Born Elementary School. But overall, I'm struck by just the enrollment numbers in general. These are very reflective of the 25% drop over the last fourteen years across the God. We, in school-aged children, Born has, actually, I think it's due or approximated to Boston, and maybe just more families having accessibility to commute to their place of work, for example. We haven't seen the same dramatic drop, but it's still been a reduction. And it's interesting, at the youngest grade levels, when we look at those kinds of numbers, they're just not huge. They're not 180, they're not 190, and so on. So that's interesting. And yet, we still have very good class size numbers. And those are, actually, they're almost ideal, other than my teaching years. And let's see. I think that that's it for my initial thoughts from a budget subcommittee chair perspective at this point. The only thing I would say is, I want to point out to folks that there are three members of our budget subcommittee that are here. There are myself, there are J.B. Throman to the left of me, and there are Mr. Clay to the right of me. So we are three members of the budget sub, obviously, any of the school committee members would welcome feedback, information, and input. It's really helpful to us over the next month in particular. But the budget subcommittee members have a little bit more knowledge about a lot of this stuff, and certainly are really happy to talk more at length about both past fiscal years and the one coming up. So that's, it's an invitation. Thanks very much.
I just want to clear one thing up too, that while it shows direction, the data paper referring to is a tier-two request. Am I correct?
Right.
Yeah, so that really just shows direction. It's not one of our immediate tier-one priorities. And so just to be clear...
Yeah, and I, maybe I didn't use the terminology right. I referred to just the stipends to increase our capacity, the eight thousand dollar stipend. But I appreciate it.
Back on the, you know, the outline of the 1.6% increase over since 2010. One of the questions that comes up from time to time, that I ask about that, is about the enrollment numbers as that compares. And so could you address the enrollment numbers in 2010 versus as compared to what we have at this point?
I don't have, I like to be precise, so I don't have that exact number in front of me, but we're roughly around four to five hundred students less than 2010 era. But again, I think, from my perspective, our budget reflects our understanding of that. We have not, you know, the function of the budget is, we don't sit here and wait for the town to tell us what to do. We also work ourselves, we're very independent as a school district and administrative team. You know, if we really thought that we were being in a compromised position, we'd be banging walls and banging heads and whatever. But we know that the fiscal realities of the community has also identified that our enrollment has come down. So we've tried to be, you know, again, prudent in our budget planning. Now, when you look at the spreadsheet that has all the other communities, every one of those have faced serious enrollment drops. I mean, sandwich in itself, there's been nine hundred to a thousand students less, if my data serves me right. Dennis Shon at the regional school district is like eight hundred students less than what they'd had. There's no reflection of a reduction in their annual increases or their percentage increases at the same time. So again, that's the proud part. I think that we've taken that as a representation in our budget planning process, that we know our enrollment has dropped and things can't stay the same. As I said earlier, Born High School, with our enrollment dropping at Born High School, especially with that year that we had an upper Cape assessment that was larger than life from a fiscal perspective, we reduced here at Born High School. We reduced staff. You know, our goal isn't to just, if we got it, keep it. That's not our goal every year. Our goal is to prioritize what is important to us and to our students. And to our students' is, it comes down to offering programs, offering the right support, offering the right opportunity, giving them every opportunity that we can possibly muster within our administrative capacity to do. And in that, there are tough decisions, and sometimes reductions are part of that. Yeah, just want to make, if I'd like to make, oh, we have one? Sorry.
Okay. I'd like to ask a question, just as like the newcomer to those communities, so I probably know the least amount out of everybody. But have you factored into the, any upcoming years, that the class sizes would stay the same or relatively the same?
Again, we do, I've asked, we've been watching patterns over the years. You know, we put ourselves in a position where we have a pretty good understanding as to where we are as far as our enrollment for pre-kindergarten, kindergarten, and what's coming up within the schools. I also want to be clear, if there's a demographic bubble that comes up, we're going to do everything we can to meet that. When we say that this is our recommendation based off projections, if one of these projections fails miserably, then we're going to have to identify concessions to meet that. We're not going to go into next fiscal year and say, you know what, darn it, we said this is what it's going to be, I'm not changing. We're going to say, if all of a sudden, class size approaches, I think twenty-five is really our point, is really start having discussions. We get up to twenty-six, twenty-seven, which used to be a reality here. We get up around that number, we need to stop looking for ways to mitigate that and to address that. And that, obviously, to us budgetarily, from a fiscal governance perspective, means that we have to identify ways to afford that. We're not going to put our students and our teachers in a compromising position if class size starts ballooning to a certain point if we didn't project well.
So it sounds like you're saying, in the next few years, we're not expecting a giant growth in population? Just so that we wouldn't go back in a year and say, why didn't let those two teachers go in two years?
Right. Again, I don't have a crystal ball, so I don't... But looking at, this has been helpful with the MS School Building Authority, because through their process, they also gave us a demographic report, what it looks like in projections of like for the future. And they're measuring it off as a lower growth for born community. And that's really based off of the areas for build, the building permits that are out there, the places for building. So unless all of a sudden, you know, your school-aged parents and members buy all of the houses that are for sale in town, which, again, could happen. If it does, we'll address that. But unless that happens, we have enough data to say that this is really where we're at.
I have one more, and it was more of a clarification, kind of going off what Mrs. Baratini was asking about in the ECEP. It sounded like you were saying it's about ninety thousand total for nine students, and that it's generally fourteen thousand per pupil anyway? So just to clarify, is that in addition to the fourteen? Or is that, that's generally nine thousand per pupil for the ECEP then, that are ten thousand for the ECP? So is that in addition to the fourteen that we're spending?
Okay. It's, I'm going to try to explain it the best I can.
Okay.
At the end of the day, when we look at our budget and what it costs us to educate students in the community born, it's fourteen thousand dollars per student. When we educate a student at four Cs, the MOU that we agreed to, the school committee as well as with four Cs, we agreed that we would pay ninety percent of our per pupil expenditure for a student to attend that. So does that mean that we're paying thirty thousand dollars for that student? No. It's not, it's not, it's not apples to apples like that. At the end of the day, it's in our Schedule Nineteen, it's in our filing with the state, and our value per student is the same. It doesn't increase. Again, it's all around the fiscal process of it. But our formula for the MOU, the memorandum of agreement on expanding with four Cs, is based off of our per pupil expenditure to help pay for the tuition to attend that school, for them to get that program off the ground as well. I hope that helped.
No, it did. And I think it's a definite point of clarification that you're not spending, you know, double the amount of money for those particular kids to meet their, you know, challenging goals under, you know, more rigorous academic education while getting that. So I think that's kind of an important clarification to make for that program. So thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you, Superintendent LaMarche. I think we'll be back in a second. Okay, to return to the public participation section, item number seven, we're just going to revisit that with some discussion over the idea of grade divisions within the Born School District, and talking about the option that would include a fifth grade at the elementary school at the Borndale location, excuse me, at the Peebles location, forgive me. And I just want to reiterate that that's an important aspect to this, because in some of the research we're going to provide, and certainly some of the research I've been doing on the transition, that the transition itself presents a big challenge for students, just the actual transition itself. This district has recognized that. I remember early on, we actually had transition committees that assisted students going from fourth to fifth grade and eighth to ninth grade between the different schools. And that was a key component in ensuring success for our students. So when we're now adding an additional transition potentially, going for a Borndale student that would go from a fourth grade, how do you decide that a Borndale student has two transitions and a Peebles student has one? If you were a parent, where would you want your student to go? And how does the district deal with the influx of people that all of a sudden really want their students at a new school with one transition? I mean, these are some of the aspects that we have to consider in developing this. The other thing that I would point, that I would ask as part of a deliberation is, and I've considered a lot of this research and discussion, what's best for our students? And I believe that our district, while maybe we've considered the opportunity, the fact that matters is that we've been working with the K through four now. And I don't believe it's been a tremendous detriment to learning. And for us to place an extraordinary premium by exercising an option that would be far more expensive than a pre-K through four, is the district, is this committee prepared to put a price tag on that premium and to what value that is? So I'm not saying yes or no, I'm just giving you some points of deliberation.
I think the counterpoint to that, or something else that needs to be thought about as well, transition, you know, we talk about transition and the importance of, you know, having our students transition the least amount of times during their K through twelve years, is that is there a problem currently with our fifth graders being at the middle school? I think the answer to that question is going to eliminate some of these options in moving forward. And Mrs. Ryan could probably speak to that more. Do we find that our fifth grade students aren't having the success that they are having being in a building with sixth, seventh, and eighth graders? Should they be moved? If the answer to that question is yes, then maybe we should be moving forward and looking more at changing. But if our students at the fifth grade level, and all three of mine have been through the middle school with great success, five through eight, then why are we even contemplating the idea of disrupting that age group?
Mr. Chairman, and Ms. Rooney, please...
And please don't say it's a money issue. Because first and foremost, we're here for the students.
To answer your question, part of the school building committee work has been what this community has been through over the past. And we know through our experiences, either as an employee or as you as parents, that students, we, in this community, we've had a number of schools. We've had a number of elementary schools. We've got a number of grade spans. We've got a number of transitions. So part of deliberation was, was there at one point in time belief that fifth grade should be part of the elementary school level? And if you look at some of our frameworks around the state, there's a lot of work that's around grade spans up to fifth grade, and then the transition from six through eight, something of that nature. So part of the conversation has circled around, is fifth grade really, should it be considered programmatically and educationally? Not taking into consideration whether our kids are having a poor experience or a good experience at Born Middle School, but from an educational perspective, should they be considered part of an elementary school? Was that part of some plan at some point in time as well? Some of the deliberation has been around when Born Middle School was first conceptualized, was it really a sixth through eight building or was it a five through eight building? And see, that's why when I talk about the three things that are really going to come into play, fifth grade is one of them, and we need more clarification from our school building committee. And we're lucky enough to have members who were part of the Born Middle School Building Committee, on that committee, to help share with us, you know, the thought, again, the past experience. Was fifth grade really considered to be a permanent fixture in the middle school? Or were we looking at it as being part of the elementary school? And again, from a curriculum perspective, a pre-K or K through five school has been looked at as an optimal grade span for schools with some research. But it's something we have to look closer at and have, you're right, have more deliberation on. And Ms. Ryan has already given us some feedback on fifth grade, that they have not, they've had a wonderful experience at Born Middle School. So we have to take that into consideration.
Mr. Chairman, real quick, I just need to make sure that I understand exactly what you mentioned as members of the school building committee. What, do you need something from us tonight to move forward with what decisions we have to make together as a group with your committee? There's an essential question I want to make sure that we answer, like now, if we can answer.
Mr. Chairman, and great question, Mr. Stone. It was really around, the school building committee wanted to learn from this committee, was there a, not official, but was there more of a position that this committee is leaning towards or taking to help or assist with the decision making? We had a great conversation at the last school building committee meeting, that this is not a political process, this is an actual best interest for students process. And the school building committee, because it has a cross-representation, which includes school committee members, we just wanted to get a sense of this body as the, you know, the board of directors for the school system. Do you see fifth grade as being a potential positive or a negative? And just have some healthy deliberation around it. It doesn't mean a final decision is being made today. The school building committee has some work to do over the next couple of meetings. But really, to have a healthy dialogue around it, and how to get a sense or a measure where this committee's at around the educational component of fifth grade. Did that answer your question?
It did. Well, and it actually helped me to solidify what my thought is on this initially, and that's simply this. A people change when it's not methodical, well thought out, and the value of it hasn't been calculated ahead of time, you know exactly what you're going to get, you've estimated the cost of, whether it's financial or loss of productivity or loss of curriculum, the loss of cohesion. Minimal incremental change from my viewpoint, and based on the character of our community, I think it's always best. I think that for us as a community, incremental, methodical changes are what we want to do, well thought out and measured, because we will not ever be a community, and I don't necessarily, I don't want to be in a community like this, it just throws money at a problem, just tests things out sort of wildly, right? We need to be methodical. And I think that, with that said, if it ain't broke, don't fix it applies a little bit here, and if we have a methodology that seems to make sense, where we have a five through eight building and we have some K through four buildings, and it minimizes the numbers of factors we have to consider overall, if we use the baseline of what we would consider success, as long as we can benchmark it reasonably with other kinds of things, I don't know why we would change, would be my sort of theoretical question. I mean, it's about, it's about right sizing our objectives here, where we build, where we go, or when we add on, or when we improve, to get the most out of it for the students. And I don't know that that's the testing bag that I want to use to say, let's start shifting a lot of grades once. I'm not, for me, as one who said, I'm just not comfortable with that right now. So for what it's worth, that's initially, and I think it's, you know, I can be dissuaded any less, I'm sure it can be from that opinion, but from my viewpoint, I, we want to minimize the number of change and distractions for their own sake. So I don't know if that, obviously, mentioned, when you guys kind of go forward.
Yes.
In the preparation for considering the different options, have either any examples of towns that have a single grade school system, you know, like a system, a single grade school? And has there been any type of dialogue with those other towns to see what they think about the multiple transitions? Because I can also see, you know, that there could be people who say, transition, you got to buck it up, you got to learn, you know, you have to learn to transition and adapt in life. I happen to be one of those people who thinks that type of that way. But I also know that it is disruptive in terms of, you know, a lot of the benchmarks for following along in the educational realm. So the thing that I think, you know, the commentary about we'll buck it up and try to teach people to transition, is that really the job that the schools are in? Or is the job really educating the academic area at the foremost? And I would think that it would be the academic area. So back to my question, what other towns are there? So back to my question, what other towns are there?
Ms. Promination, go ahead, community is, in our state is very local and very, I don't know, mission oriented or I'm not sure if I'm saying the right word, but it's all relative. So you go to any community, they're going to tell you that either it's good or it's bad, it's all anecdotal, it's not, it's not really research based. We have looked at lots of pieces of research, there's some research that's out there. There's been a ton of research recently on grade spans or transitions, but there's enough research out there, empirical, there were two empirical studies on it and stuff like that that we're looking at and trying to help with the decision. I think one of the important pieces for me, which I don't have a good measure on because I haven't had children go through this system all the way through yet, but we're really getting to a point now for the first time in Bourne, where we haven't had students that have shuffled from one building to the next. And is that, is that going to pay dividends for us at this point in time? You know, our graduating students or our students that are in Bourne High School now have only had one elementary school, one middle school. Where in the past, I think as recent as last year or the year before, they've gone up to Otis, they've gone to this school, they've gone to Hoxie, they've come here. So we're really getting to that point where we're really trying to, you know, see, is it more effective to have minimal transitions and stuff like that? I don't have a good measuring stick for that, other than actually because of your question about other communities and what they look like, this community really should weigh in about how that feels compared to how it was in the past. Because many people are now experiencing that minimal transitions than they experienced in the past. I think it's valuable with a decision making.
Just to bring one data point, during our mass conference, I did meet up with a school committee member from South Row, and I called this person a couple, about five to 10 days ago, I think, and discussed this, because they had a very similar chance opportunity about seven years ago when they were building the school. And they were looking at two communities, elementary schools versus one with a similar grade setup. And their concern edged more to the single school, which is what they ended up going to, mostly because of continuity, maintaining K through four and a continuity of training and teaching for the students between the two schools. So they came at it from a slightly different approach, continuity of education for the academy, like you referred to, as compared to possibly the transition schedules. I didn't really get into discussing transitions with them, but because their decisions are already made, and as Steve mentioned, I believe they were just now starting to realize the efforts are potentially improved for them.
Hi, so my biggest thing, first of all, I will say that I went to Bourne schools and went to five different schools growing up. Not saying anything in the way, but just saying we've come a long way from many, many transitions to just a few. But my biggest thing is picking up the vision as we're playing this, I mean, I know that there's so much, you know, written and thought of, but I don't want to build a building and have it completely full when we get in there. So are we going to have room to have all, everyone have the full day kindergarten, get the preschool in there? That's, so if it factors one or another with fifth grade, that would be my only consideration when we're talking about shifting a grade, just making sure we have room for our future goals that we have in mind.
Mr. Paul, just a couple of points of clarification. One is kindergarten is part of every plan. Full day kindergarten is part of every plan, yes. We're going to take advantage of that process because it is reversible. We're a great district because we already have an established pre-kindergarten program, which is not reimbursable by MSBA. So that will stay in existence, which is great. It's not something that we're going to lose during these projects as well. But full day kindergarten is part of every plan that we propose. And to answer your question about will we be a capacity? Again, if every parent of school aged children buys every house for sale in Bourne, we'll be a capacity.
I think I mentioned this last week at a joint meeting, that I'm not that familiar with the previous building moving, so it's probably more advanced than this, it's been there before. But I do know that it's, you know, having kids in Bourndale and at the middle school, I only started getting the notifications for the talk about the new building development and then hearing about the different plans this year. And this is a, this is going to impact the community overall, everybody. And I think that as new to the board, I still have concerns that we're even discussing making a decision of this magnitude for something that we haven't taken time to have a qualitative or quantitative analysis. I mean, I think pretty much seconding what Matt was saying is that this is a huge decision that has lots of ramifications to all parts of the community, including the middle school does have its five through eight. And I don't think that they're bursting at the seams, so if you get rid of a grade, what's going to happen to that store? And also, you know, we're not talking about whether we theoretically want to move fifth grade out of the elementary school so that there'll be two fifth grades in each, as the classic kind of example that I grew up with, it was, you know, K through five. That's not on the table, you're not going to get a fifth at Bourndale and a fifth at the new Peabody's. So you're really kind of changing the whole dynamic and doing something different that nobody in this town is used to, we haven't seen before. We don't have a lot of examples in this surrounding towns that we're facing any opinion on. So I'm a data-driven person, so for me, this would be a very quick decision that needed to be made, I believe, by this spring in terms of going forward with the building. So I have kind of, you know, it seems like it just came up this fall. So it's a kind of, you know, if we did have the money to do it, it doesn't necessarily mean that we should do it, which I think is kind of along with what Matt was saying. About if it's not broken, don't fix it. Thank you.
Well, actually, yeah, the setup was really relevant. Yeah, I appreciate that, thank you, Erica. No, for me, I just was talking about the one of the three questions that were sort of essential to the building committee, and it was just the idea of where fifth should be placed. It wasn't the idea of capacity or renovation. Peabody's is not the building we want to.
That's not.
Yeah, 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 no, no, just for me, it's about the.
It's not.
Yeah, okay, good, good, we're together.
That's not what I'm saying at all, I'm talking about fifth grade.
You're talking about the.
Coming out. So fifth grade coming out of the middle school is a whole nother can of worms about the middle school. I mean, you know, I haven't had anybody mention that, what's going to happen to the middle school that houses them? That's a lot of room right there, I mean, they're a couple, you know, once, twice a week. And I mean, I might be wrong, Ms. Ryan can tell me that. It's not empty, but it's not bursting at the seams. So now you're talking about taking an entire grade of kids and housing them in a school all by themselves. I think that's a different can of worms to the community if you are taking fifth grade and putting each in the middle school, I mean, each in the elementary school. That's not what we're talking about, I think that's, you know, a confusing issue. And I also think of the timetable, this just came up this fall, and now we're being asked to make this, you know, very big decision that has broad ramifications. So I think that's kind of more, it's just a very fast timetable to make something like that. And when I was hearing Matt saying, it's just, I mean, it's not, and Aunt Mary, Aunt Mary was saying too, you know, it's not just about, you know, that it's not broken, don't fix it, but I mean, if there was some sort of empirical evidence that said that they'd be more vigorously challenged, I guess it would be better for their social development, and we're missing the boat on something. That's different, but I don't know that we've had any time to collect any yet or do any research on that. So it seems like that's moving very fast with such a big decision like that.
Ms. Patrick, if I could address, you're absolutely right, it's moving fast. Once MS, Mass School Building Authority identifies you in need of some type of a project, their timeline is very strict, because they're giving you possibly 12, 13, 14, 15 million dollars. So they have a very prescribed timeline you have to follow. We only entered into an agreement with the project, owner's project manager last June. We attended a meeting last June where it was solidified with MSBA to start. And so we just started with, you know, things over the summertime, just collecting. And then we hired a group for feasibility, an architect for feasibility study to be conducted. We did that over the summer, and then all of a sudden, trust me, I feel like I'm on a treadmill when it comes to the Mass School Building Authority and their requirements. And you're right, it's an April 7 decision for this school building committee to put forward a preferred schematic design for a single building project through the Mass School Building Authority. Now, doing that doesn't mean that it's done, meaning that that's what you, that those are the bill of goods that we're, it's what we're endorsing and saying that we believe in and going forward with that, but it's still going to be the will, this committee, the will, the community, and et cetera, moving forward. We all agree that Peabody's is in need of something. It can't continue the way it is. What we land on the side will be based off, this town approved last, the previous fall, 2014, yeah, 2014, this community approved a feasibility study of 700 thousand dollars regarding all of this. So a lot of work is being done around the facility, the needs of the facility and all that. What it's really coming down to now is what is, you know, a huge portion of this, which I hired for to advocate for, with your blessing, is what's education best for our kids. And that's what it's starting to come down to. So that's why I listed fifth grade as the number one thing, the number one issue that we have to address going through this, but it is fast. I'm, I like data as well. And so that's why I've been trying to do some reading of studies, empirical studies, and grade spans, and transitions, and all of that. And we're going to get closer to deliberating that at our March 10 meeting with the school building committee. But it is fast, there's no question about it. I don't know, I can't, it's, I can't control it, it's a Mass School Building Authority control. I know it doesn't, that's not going to make you feel better.
Okay, I think I would like to continue on with the agenda tonight. Next, we have the business, the school business side of our agenda, and there's a series of minutes to approve. We have already approved the January 6 minutes, which needs to be amended in the January, February 3rd minutes. And I think we had tabled the January 30 minutes just for corrections on, but it's, most of those have been made, there's only one correction that needs to be itemized recently, and I can send that along. And then we also have, in addition to the January 30, the February 27th, was a short meeting we had with the selectmen to appoint, Ms. Fitzpatrick, for the position of interim school committee member. So if no one has any issues, can we approve this by consensus? Okay, so approved, thank you. All right, next up on the list, we have the policies. And I'd like to turn that over to Mr. Stone, he's, I believe, the chair of the policy sub? Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. Okay, school committee colleagues, I just want to briefly talk to you about policies and just remind you of the approach that we've taken regarding policies. To be clear, we've got policies that haven't been validated or reviewed, looked at as far back as the year 2000. It's too long and too far for us to go like that. Just too much has changed in the last 16 years. And there's a lot of policies that are not just outdated, but really just not applicable anymore in our contemporary world of education. They just have to go. We call that retiring, and retiring policies, as recommended by the policy subcommittee, can happen for several different kinds of reasons. They include, for example, no legal or regulatory requirement from Mass General Law or otherwise, no recommendation from the Massachusetts Association of School Committees, MASC, that we even have that policy. Not that that should drive everything, but it's certainly one indicator, especially if we're measuring value. We always want to know what does the policy give us. Policies that are fallible and not really well reviewed or adding any value to achievement, we really have to wonder why they're there. If there is no legal requirement, you have to question whether or not we should still have that policy. Particularly if we have ones that overlap one another, that kind of butt one another, sometimes can conflict with one another and so on. So as a reminder, we're going through chapter by chapter. Chapter A is first, and then B, and C, and on, over the next, well, 18 months still remaining, I'm sure of that. MASC is supporting us in this effort, just with a lot of drafting and real groundwork in terms of review. And now we're to the point where we're moving forward and we have some recommendations for you regarding these policies. So with that, I would call your attention to the packet that you have, that you have enough in blue and says to be retired. And I just want to call your attention to the first one, policy AB. So if you flip through it, I'll name the policy real quick, it's the people in their school district. And it's, and I know, and I know, it's, that is literally the title, of course. And it sounds a little like we should maybe wonder about expectancy. And I think at one time, this was sort of a recommendation for a lot of school districts to have information about, but again, this falls into the category, at least for the policy sub, as a recommendation to you all, that we retire this. And the reason we retire is simply because it's, we have philosophies and objectives and other things that we review every year. And this is just again, for us, it's not adding a lot of value to the space. And frankly, make people less inclined even to look at the policies than we want them to look at, right? And that's really one of our objectives here. So with regard to that, a recommendation that the policy sub has made to do is to retire policy AB, the people in their school districts. I, Mr. Chair, if that's what you want to do. Yeah, I would say they're not all exactly the same rationale. There's a couple that are covered by other policies and so on, so I know it's a bit more tedious with the chair, but I would like to.
Retire AB.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, extensions?
Thank you. Okay, thank you. The next policy that I'd like to call your attention to is policy ACA, non-discrimination on the basis of specs. This is an important policy, it has a lot of value and a lot of critical values, but it's also one that is covered by other areas, namely policy AC, which is now is a consolidated policy, one of the most critical ones we have. We actually already updated AC like within the last couple of year and a half. Thank you, Susan, for all that, the question and answer that we've had in the last couple of weeks. But AC is an excellent policy. In fact, it's constant, it's alive, we updated, we're going to make a recommendation of it tonight, in fact. But it's covered there, so this is just based on duplication. And I, on behalf of policy sub, I move that we retire policy ACA.
Any discussion? None, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, extensions?
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chair. With that, policy ACBA, bullying, ACBA. Again, this is about duplication. ACBA bullying has been covered now at length, by the way, you'll recall, in the last two years, we've covered bullying through policy A now. It's very comprehensive, it has, we're actually legally bound to contain, gosh, so much more information, the requirements that's here, and now we, this is, actually, this policy is, frankly, is just. So AHA has really replaced this, and I move that we retire policy ACBA.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, extensions, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, policy ACE. Policy ACE, another non-discrimination policy, very important, this time on the basis of handicap. Again, to emphasize, this is now very well covered, much more specifically covered in policy AC, and I recommend that we retire policy ACB, so I still believe that.
Excuse me, discussion? See none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, extensions, and carries?
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chair. Next, policy AD, Alpha Delta. AD, educational philosophy. Now, this is interesting because when we talk about educational philosophy, for us, it speaks to something that we talk about actually at every school committee meeting, at least as an introductory beginning, and it speaks to our vision, our mission, and our objectives for making this school here. It's a topic of obsession, frankly, amongst the school community, because it's one of our primary jobs. The educational philosophy, if you will, the subcommittee has just determined, and recommending it to you, that it is not adding value to what you do. It's a policy that takes up space in a way that is not productive for advancing education in the community, and the schools have recommended to retire AD in lieu of the existence, frankly, of vision, mission, and objectives on an annual, frankly, a semi-annual basis, based on how much we review.
Any discussion?
So if there, is there any type of policy that says, let's pretend none of these people are here, and we still think that that's all really important, to have a mission, vision, and all of that, is that addressing that in the policy?
The mission and some other things are actually coming up as ones that we will be recommending. be recommending, uh, retiring of, interestingly enough. But I do appreciate the process, yeah, I do appreciate the process question. And I guess in January, to the extent that, to the extent that we wanna maybe give ourselves direction on vision, mission and objectives. Come to think of it, we don't have qualified or hate group meeting. We are binding ourselves to do this process each year.
Through the chair of the committee, um, there isn't one entity that wouldn't bind us to that. Just look at the Center for District School Accountability and Descent. Uh, look at the educated evaluation system. There isn't one practice that we have that doesn't bind this organization into creating a vision, mission and objectives or goals, uh, moving forward. Every, every system that we have in place is, is tied into all of that.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, I, I, there's, we're committed to what we do. I don't see us leaving a vision, mission and objectives behind. Um, they speak much more true to our community, to our education philosophy than this document does. Um, like, much more organically throughout the year. I mean, this is really kind of standalone, evolves as it should. Um, so I, I still, I appreciate the comment, I'm glad for it, it's a good question. Um, I still, for the purpose of the discussion, Mr. Chair, I still recommend that we retire that AB. And if it's determined that in the future, we would like to give ourselves some more structure in that regard, we can definitely pass policy sub with, let's, let's codify this kind of process and bind ourselves in this kind of way.
I kinda wonder if, um, uh, the, you know, the citizens of Born would wanna see that somewhere like that, you know? It's written that it is, it, it, that there will be a really, really large interest. It's still, so just saying that you may depart like that, you know, that's putting, and I'm not saying it's not putting you in the right place, but that's putting your trust in the people there, that they'll constantly be evolving and reevaluating and reassessing the goals and the missions of the district. But it's not set in policies on that. I wonder if it's just, you know, something that's not a bad policy to have, that it would be addressed, um, at least a year or two, as a rule. And of course, you know, everybody else would be thinking of more, but where these are rotating positions by, by elections, that it's something that the group as a whole would have to try to, to look at at least on a year or two.
Through the chair, keep in mind, this is, this, um, I, I believe this one is one of many that MASC doesn't even have as a model policy. This was specifically Born. I could be wrong on that, but again, we're working with MASC on determining what are best policies for the born public schools moving forward for the operation of the district. Um, I, I certainly would recommend to the committee to table the vision, mission, whatever, and take a look at it, if you can quantify it to one policy or something like that. Um, but I just, um, you know, this was, the whole goal here is to try to clean up policies that were created, just like what you were saying, um, you know, that we think is best for the born community, but they're really not operational to how the district runs. Uh, so that's, that's the deliberation in the process we're going through with all of our policies.
I think one of the things that, um, we had discussed that month was taking procedural types of things out of our policy. And our policies should only reference what Mass General law states and what's in our contracts and things like that, that, um, that should be part of our, our policy manual.
I, I would have to echo that, just, that was actually my comment that I was gonna make, is not to bind, to bind ourselves specifically to, uh, the idiocy cases of the town. I mean, they're important, we read vision, mission and vision every, start every single meeting. I think it's, it's part of our culture, the way we do this. Um, but, you know, I, I would agree with Steve that this might be something we wanna table, precisely why we wanna break these things out, go them separately, and maybe everybody could get back to this. Would you guys agree to do something like that?
I got a motion, I'm kinda committed to it.
Yeah, I think we will.
I, but I would say this, I mean, if we, Mr. Chair, I'm, I'm taking a vote. But the, I, I do not wanna drop the motion. So, if the motion goes, I'm good with that, or whatever, uh, the will of the committees, that's fine. Um, I, I can't say that policy sub, either way, can take this back to home or anywhere we want to do that, um, and we can kind of take up the process about sort of codifying ourselves and expectation we have, with community members like, like the vicious has for how we run the district. And we'll always have a vision, we'll always have a mission, we'll always have, uh, objectives, so, for what it's worth, but either way, I think it's all the same.
So, you wanna keep your motion? So, we'll, we'll, we'll end the discussion then there, go ahead and take a vote. Um, all those in favor of retiring of, of the motion that made of retiring AB, um, please vote in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, any carries, thank you. Any extensions? Thank you.
And we'll, um, Emery, I'd like to know if you will take that into our next vote as well. Thank you for that. Um, ADA, uh, school next recommendation, uh, for retirement in the school district of goals and objectives. I actually feel much more strongly about this one than I did about the other ones, because I, I do not believe that, you know, policy, goals and objectives are in place. Um, they're not, they're not as fluid there, they're not, um, they're a bit more fixed, we have to vote on it every time. Our own policies, interesting enough, about developing policies, um, say that when we change them, we have to, it takes actually a couple of meetings, I guess, to distribute some changes, then we review them, and then a month later we vote, and so, that's just not, I think, the organic way we wanna do our objectives for our district, uh, and our mission as well. So, um, so with that, I recommend, policy sub recommends strongly that we retire ADA. So, it'd be even more than a philosophy, because at least there's a process, so.
I didn't.
Okay, we have a second discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, extensions, thank you.
Thank you. Uh, the last one is, uh, I'll echo, AB, commitment to accomplishment. Um, the, uh, it, it's not, it's, it's, this one's difficult to justify, frankly, this policy. Actually, this dates back to nineteen ninety-nine, so I was wrong, and then two thousand is, is the oldest, this is from nineteen ninety-nine. Um, and again, as, as we scan through it, I think it'll be self-edited. In fact, it was one of the ones that caused us to say, we really need to put these baskets of retirement and validation and, and, uh, just adjusting and tweaking. And this one is not in the valid, adjusted, tweaked. We really, um, it, it's, we're committed to accomplishing, uh, any number of things that are there and their evidence through lots of other activities. We really, um, feel like this is not adding value for us at all, so.
And is that a motion?
Uh, I'd like to move that we, uh, retire AB.
For a second, uh, any discussion? There are none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, extensions, if you care. I do believe we have one more now.
Uh, ADDA, my apologies. Did I?
The backside is...
No, I'm sorry. Yes. Thank you. Oh, um, actually, with every diligence, we can hold off on this until, because it'll be in more context when we talk about one of the, uh, distributions of the...
So, we're not gonna carry this?
Oh, no, we will, but, but, uh, I hadn't planned on bringing that up until...
Right, I, I just, for the, sending you agenda, I moved it up to the retirement category versus tied to the ADDA.
Okay.
So, the chair, questions and direction?
Yeah, I would, I would follow the chair of the policy sub. And when we distribute the ADDA and explain it, then you could, you could retire ADDA dash R, which we've turned it up, also had filed names, ADDA E one and ADDA E two, uh, for retirement here, so.
Uh, so more about those after. Uh, the next policy actually is not in front of me. This is a validation, and I wanna be clear that the whole purpose of validating our existing policies as applicable is to simply say, the policy sub is reviewed, it's still valid, it still adds value to what we're trying to do in the district, and we're just acknowledging we're not making any changes at this point. It is online, um, it is the policy that deals with legal status, uh, it's consistent with the MASC recommended policy, um, we do not recommend any changes at this time. So, with that, we would like to stamp it, uh, as having been reviewed and validated as of March. Um, so, we recommend validating, uh, Policy AA, legal status. And it'll be stamped as basically validated once, once we, we re-approve it, uh, when validated is the best word. Reviewed was the other one, and we just thought reviewed was too soft and not active enough to indicate what we're doing.
Okay, so you're looking for, you're looking to make a motion to validate it?
To validate policy, so that we can acknowledge with a date stamp essentially on the policy that it's been reviewed as of twenty sixteen.
I just wrote on the screen, if you wanted to read it, it's a very short one, if you wanted to read it before you...
Then, school district legal status. It talks about our requirements, um, that we basically, um, have, well, I mean, we have legal obligations, we need to make sure we meet them. Um, it's really short, it's really straightforward. Um, again, we have no recommended changes, and we think it's important, so, that's why we validate.
Okay, so we have a motion, anything? For the second, all those in favor? Excuse me, any discussion, Mr. Sted? We, we have a second, just looking for discussion. Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
That's because we're not facing each other.
I know, but that's...
Let me tell what's happening. All right, that's the name of that discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, extensions, with motion carries, thank you.
Okay, there are three revised policies that I'd like to call your attention to. So, in the next packet, if you could pull it out. These, by the way, are distributions, so although the changes are not, um, large, in the case of a couple of policies, um, anytime we change anything at all, we need to make sure it'll be distributed, and then at the next meeting we vote. And even if it's like a normal legal change or a Mass General law change, that's the kind of thing we're looking at. So, in the case of the first policy, AC, just as a reminder, um, in June of twenty twelve, we updated this policy, uh, in our scheme, wasn't it? Yes, June of twenty twelve. Uh, so it's fairly recent, but it does miss a couple of Mass General law or regulatory requirements. They're highlighted, so if you look, uh, at the bottom of, of the non-discrimination policy, which I've talked about before, it's excellent, it meets the requirements that we want for our district, um, as well as legal obligations. And, uh, it now includes sex and gender identity, rather than having those have been separate policies, and gender identity actually wasn't recognized category, uh, in our policies previously in this matter. So, uh, with that, this is just a distribution and...
I, I thought this, I, I thought I had the right one in here, but it also asked to include the word AG, A T E.
A T E.
So, that'll be next to the highlighted. Can I distribute it?
Thank you. So, if, um, if we can make a penalty change, and then before, uh, it gets emailed out to you, if you can make sure that along with the two policies that we had, which prior to be ready. Thank you. Um, so this would also say age discrimination, so it's protected category, okay?
Can I ask a question?
Please.
So, I noticed on, on your, uh, presentation there, uh, Mr. Marjorie wrote homelessness. Do we have to put that in there as well, or that be considered?
Yes, we do use that, so we will put that in there.
Homelessness. As well as protected category.
I also have a question. Um, are these policies the ones that are coming from Mass?
Yeah. They're, they're coming, so the way the process works is the recommendations come in from the staff at Mass, who's full-time responsible, deals with policies and so forth. Those, some of those, many of those recommendations, we, make sense to us from the policy sub perspective, some did not, uh, and we made our deliberation and recommendation to accordingly. So, they definitely consider the information that we essentially are paying for, uh, from the Mass. Which is great, because it's accelerating a lot in this process, um, but it's not a, this isn't a pass through.
Okay, so we have a motion? No, no, we just asked a distribution, forgive me.
Yeah, just distribution, something like that. Um, the next policy that you have distributed is, uh, Policy, uh, ADC, my thing is, yep, ADC. Um, it's very, uh, uh, well, first of all, it says smoking on school premises. One of the changes that we need to make to this is adding the word, uh, smoking prohibited on school premises. My apologies, Steve, for not catching up on the different graph. Um, smoking on school premises is not the title we want for this policy. Because it's, we're not, we're applying things that are, are not true. Um, it's smoking prohibited on school policies, that's a yellow highlighting thing that'll be added. Um, we did include vaporizers, uh, because of the sort of evidence that the chemicals that include the vaporizers are really, frankly, uh, that much kind of different, with a lot of the harmful things that are in cigarettes. Uh, so that's included on here as well. Although small, that is a big addition. Vapor cigarettes are, would be prohibited, so we're gonna be adding to this policy, so that's really important.
So, who is the cause of vapor cigarettes?
Uh, I think, I think that, in this term is vaporizers. I mean, we can, through feedback, if, if there's a more... Oh, right, I hear what you're saying, vaporizers, thank you. We're gonna make a note as a term, the correct term of art, but vaporizers were the ones that, that were discussed and we have an opinion, so, but we'll follow up on that, I appreciate the feedback. Uh, it's already on, yeah, any tobacco products, yeah, yeah.
Okay, so, but, okay, the reason why I ask that is because smoking is prohibited, but chewing tobacco is also...
No, it's...
The tobacco products are, are prohibited?
And vaporizers, right, so we've chilled, we selected a, a title to the policy, no worries, it's already, it's very limited, is what you're pointing out. It's good, it's good, we appreciate it. Um, we were trying to tweak it, uh, minimally, but now, we will make sure vaporizers is the right term of art. Um, let's see. Yep. So, here's the way I'd like to handle this one. Um, I would welcome your feedback and email, I've made a note about chewing tobacco, about vaporizers and about, frankly, the title, although we're gonna go round and round with the title, because it's hard, this other thing having like sort of a two-line title to sort of name all these things, there's none of all these things on, on school campuses. Um, I think, I think I'd welcome any feedback that folks have, but we'll, we'll modify this for next time. This one, the vaporizers, I mean, the vapor cigarettes, if you will, for the moment, um, that is a significant change. And the only other subtle change is to acknowledge that in the code of conduct, student code of conduct, that's where this, that's where penalties, punishments, education appeal, that's where it's all at, so we made reference to that. Okay, so those are the, those are the recommendations, fair and polite. And, is there a question, Mr. Chair? I think I just saw that, uh, was asking if it was, you know, early, non-school times, but it looks like this, for the last part, is prohibited at all times. ID, if there's events on weekends that are not technically school hours. Good example on Sodom Fields, if you see somebody like... Yeah, no, that's true.
By law, it's not...
That's true, yeah, no, no, people on Sodom Fields can't, right?
That's, I, I just saw that, I didn't think of it.
Mr. Chair, a quick point of order, only because we have, there's someone who's still with us, and they have a question, so you know, it's a little bit deciding, and so they welcome a quick question.
I just wanted to know, the changes about the tobacco products...
The, the...
Yeah, this allows, uh, would that be included in the paperwork for the students getting the beginning of the year?
It, it absolutely would be. The question was whether or not this would be included in, um, the student handbook, and the answer is yes, it would be updated to reflect these things as well. Thank you for that. Um, so with that, thank you for your feedback, welcome more, and, uh, it's a distribution at this point. Um, and I'll need to get you, I need you to give you an updated version of this before we get to the second one, okay? Unless you're... All right, and then the final distribution is ADDA, background checks. Now, this one is a, dare I say, complete rewrite, um, to the extent that it now includes, to be clear, we had, uh, we had query checks before, right? Those are the only kinds of background checks. Well, now we have fingerprinting, there's queries, there's other, uh, sources of information that we would mine and solicit, or have legal responsibility to do so. So, this is now called background checks, um, it incorporates a whole series of other policies and processes. Um, I did say, at first, when we talked about retirements, that one of the things we do don't wanna do in policy is have stipulations of like process and forms. Those are not appropriate in policy. Forms need to be flexible enough to be changed, like, whenever points appear that, that administration needs different information, uh, schools need to use different kind of contextual information, um, policy should be the guidelines under which, the requirements under which the expectation is to occur. So, with that, um, I will give you this distribution. This one is definitely worth, uh, taking a long view on, so there's certain homework here. I'm not optimistic that we will necessarily vote on this in April, it might be like May or June, which is all good, because we want it to advance it next year. But this one is definitely a long one, it's a lot of information here. So, again, uh, Emery and I welcome any kind of, um, information, uh, about this, background checks. But with that, because it doesn't even apply anymore, and that's the reason I waited until we got to this point, um, dare I say the title of this one, here we go, ADDA dash R, okay, so ADDA dash R. This is, um, basically a, a... This is basically a process policy, and process and policy are not things unless they're legally required that we want to get into. This is all, by the way, we put four parts, there's only even a couple that are still valid, are incorporated into background checks. Right, which is gonna be our policy here very shortly, but more importantly, we then basically recommend retirements of all dash Rs, because they're just process based. And our processes are already covered as well. Student handbooks, staff handbooks, other kinds of requirements, so this is really, we want this to be out. So the recommendation, the motion from policy sub is that we retire ADDA dash R.
For a second, all those in favor? Excuse me, discussion, I apologize.
Yes, discussion. Mr. Chairman, I wasn't able to find it, MASC didn't find it, but we have an attached file. So I would recommend amending the motion to say ADDA dash R plus attached file, which represents ADDA dash E dash one, ADDA dash E dash two, which are forms that have not, we have not been, we have not used. We, there's an updated query form that we get from the state, so this is, again, I don't know how it was attached file, but even MASC didn't identify that we had it as an attached file, so I don't believe it was actually incorporated as a policy, because it has the word file next to it.
Yeah, I was gonna address them separately, but frankly, they're directly related to R, because they're the actual forms. We can't even use these forms anymore, that's probably the most difficult one. So I don't know if you second my motion, but I'd like to amend the motion to indicate that we recommend a retirement policy ADDA dash R, and dash E one, and dash. In fact, I think, to be fair, it reflects on everything in practice that the new policy and that much I says, but.
Through the chair, our process is going to change this policy. This policy incorporates the fingerprinting that's required of professional staff, we're bringing them on board. So our query check process isn't changing. So the form that we're talking about, we already have a form that we're using, this is a 2005 form that we're not using.
So it is, it is the current form that we're using now.
But if your parents are watching, maybe they got, so not all of us have had a query form in five years.
The way the state's really updated the whole query process, sometimes it only takes an hour to get a return on the query form. So our process for query checking is not changed, this policy isn't changing what we do for queries. It only incorporates queries with fingerprinting, for, to follow a policy around background checks.
Okay, so with that, those are the three distributions. Steve, thanks for giving those out. It's why. So let's.
Let's mark it, huh?
Yeah.
Yeah, let's finish that vote, please. Okay, I'm holding off any further discussion on this. All those in favor? Opposed? Thank you.
Correct, Mr. Chairman, from policy sub, we had a discussion, and we didn't come to a conclusion, but I believe our discussion was that we would give this to the law committee to take a look at, because it was a change before we presented to the school committee for our distribution. So we did put it in the list, we, you know, we're being very efficient with our policy at this point, time to do it all, and at this point, has already been put to the law committee.
Okay, so we'll get that back then. We're not even gonna deal with it, we'll just get back, that's all we're gonna do. Okay, thank you. Okay, item number 10 on the agenda, thank you for the policy sub, I appreciate that work. Item number 10 on the, on the agenda is the budget outreach scheduled. We'd like to schedule a time, and this again is to visit with members of the high schools, the student party at a time, whether they'd be wanting to come in in the afternoons, prior to their, like, school, there's a class that they visit. And I would ask, I know I would be interested going myself. The question then comes is, was the board thankful or whether we should just before or after the vote made or?
I think before. Because there is a closed budget, but it's discussing the form this evening that's available. And so it tends to be part of a discussion and some feedback in and out of there. And then maybe people, so it ends up coming, you know, feeling involved in the.
Excellent. Beautifully done. Yeah, I actually wrote that we would get a few students that might actually come to the unit and, for our evaluation. So then the next question is, wait. Richmond, see, Richmond, what, do you have a number on that starts at?
I'm sure a parent of a student, is Tuesday, Thursday, 12:30?
Tuesday, Thursday, it's, who knows, it's before that, it's not, because we had one, they had last period, before last period, not really, they're not going to, no. It's after lunch, after lunch, a lot. Something like 11:25. Yeah, around there, 11:47, I think.
11:42.
Not that they know by five, but.
No, I think we're up there.
So what are you gonna change in the same question, today's 17th, Thursday? Uh, 15th is the Tuesday, the 22nd, the 24th? Yeah, I, 24th is a good day, good day for me, but anybody else? Yes.
Uh, my, I, I'd like 22nd.
Nothing partial, I'd be happy to do the 22nd as well. And that'd be after the. At least two members, if someone else would like to go, then I can, I'll just file as an open meeting, that's fine. Okay, so the 22nd at? So the next question is, do we invite anybody else to repeat the school committee? Do we want to invite some of the board's left men?
Um, I, I do have a, it is that this is for students, and students don't always get the opportunity to talk directly to the board, without making too much of a production. It's with all due respect to our lovely colleagues, there's live opportunities for everyone, and I'm enjoying. I would really just be interested in having a conversation with the students themselves, and kind of give something to say to the question. So, but.
We don't have more.
Well, I just was surprised that it is a vote of me. Correct, correct. And certainly, okay. Okay, so then we're reading the March 22nd, and it'll probably be sometime between 11:30 and 1:30. And let's hope this becomes a division. Okay. Mr. Donnie. Finally.
Item number 11, we have a, solely subcommittee capital request. We had a couple of changes requested, it's been going back and forth through town, and I just wanted to ask that they just brief the numbers.
I'll just go, I wait three and a half hours to speak here, so.
Take the next three and a half hours.
I'm studying this, one of the home times, so I'll be free. I'll just go quickly through the requests and then the ones that were adjusted, although to surprise, I hope we get them to the committee. So the request that we have submitted, the first one for the high school, here is the admission of the library slash media center. No change to that, gross $60,000. And then we had the system wide technology plan, there's a library, home systems and servers, maybe $25,000, probably, no, we're gonna change that, and have pop, pop that filter, but we're just gonna go forward as such. We did have a request for two media buses, $120,000. We have a request that we reduce that to one media bus, that will go to $60,000, you only get one bus this year, next fiscal year.
Hey, can you just hold on a second, where the, you're on the chart?
I'm just on the chart, sorry, that's the top, uh, chart. The next one was flooring replaced with a middle school, we added a building, $35,000. No change, I believe to that one, um. The next one is asbestos abatement, which is mostly the high school. And that, we request $150,000, they asked us to forego a year, and I, we're not supporting that request, and we go with the money FY '18. Sign roofing at Borne Elementary and here in the high school, major studio $60,000, that's still going forward, probably hang out, no change on that. And the last item was gymnasium, sanding, maybe refishing the gymnasium floor at the middle school, $27,000, that's still going forward. I'll probably give an update on that. We have had an issue over the past weekend, or, you know, they come all weekend, they have an issue with water leaking in the middle school, green classroom, the gymnasium. And initially, we thought we got appropriate gymnasium floor, it was not that damaged, it was just a slight, you know, lifting of the floor. But after another weekend, we went back, looked at again, it's a severe damage to the floor, the patio floor, really quality. Well, ha, it affects like, you know, half years, the outside entrance, so we have, yeah, so I've always been, we already had a contract to go down and evaluate it. I have contact with insurance agency today, the adjuster's coming tomorrow. We're gonna move forward with, obviously, they have to replace that section, replace the plywood, underlaying it, you know, in this, this, uh, plastic on the concrete. For the water, whatever water it was, you know, once it gets under there, it's not gonna break, it's never gonna go. So I, to again move forward with that, a goal, you know, is to get that completed in as couple of weeks, possible, because of the name of the tournament, it's in the 18, which is a big event, so hopefully, that's our goal.
So you think that potentially that number could go down?
Or potentially, you know, the other potential is, I talked to the contractor, I would potentially, I'm gonna talk to the adjuster, who are gonna have, I don't know if they would, as part of the claim, do the whole floor, it's all gonna have to match with the main, so that, well, that could be incorporated as part of that project. For the insurance or something like that, so if that does happen, I don't know yet, that would actually probably, they may go away, if we get this covered in the insurance claim. And then later, we wouldn't do that. Our goal right now is to keep the floor functionally for the rest of the school year, then the summertime, when we address the whole floor, that, that ties up the job a couple of weeks itself. Because, you know, we're a good old student, is there a safety concern?
We don't know.
Barricade rocks, I don't know what I'm doing. We're in closer with the, the teachers, to, they're not, they're, I mean, I agree. And that's all I, that's all I have, same question. A couple of other things? Something for Mike. Our change, there's been a couple of changes to the, the budget scheduling we posted before. The budget subcommittee will present the budget to the board selection in Vincom on March 14th. We raised, we had that scheduled as the 16th, the change that was given on Monday, the 14th. And the other change was potentially the budget presented to board selection on, for, uh, 19th, 4th, 4th, 19th, not 4th, 20th, it's going to be on the schedule. 19th, uh, when we present the budget to board selection. Vincom will be 3/14, now we're talking, 4, uh, April, April 19th.
Is this an opportunity to vote, uh, April 19th, or the, April 19th? That's all I have, any questions? You'll never end?
Oh, everyone has their questions. So I think the facility's going in tomorrow, but I, just quickly, the asbestos, so if you don't do the one with the 200 per request, or we can go back to one then? For your, your aspirate.
I believe the request should be, it should be the same, but, you know, I believe maybe an increase in the cost, I believe it's still the same cost.
Well, just looking at, because you had 50, you know, kind of a place going forward, so we can make it just, like, the 200 or 40, just.
I don't think it'd be, that would be the place where they're ongoing maintenance, but I think the 150 supplies will, I'm sure.
To answer your question a little bit, to evolve, Mr. Donnie's answer to that question, is we've got ongoing such to the capital area, we should be putting maintenance, ongoing maintenance in there, so the 50,000 per year is, is going to be probably removed, unless we have a substantial project that needs to be addressed. 150,000 will be considered one of our last phases for asbestos abatement, asbestos, asbestos materials, which right now is in, you know, fairly decent shape, or something we have to do, next year in this building. But as far as 50,000 a year, no one carries over unless there's a major project that needs to be done.
Okay, I think the next, I don't know, this review of proposed future agenda, the next meeting we're looking at, put a March 22nd, 11:30, 1:30 on file, for the meeting, just for the purposes of a discussion with the students. And then after that, I think it's April 6th, 2016. Mr. Chairman, I don't need to be there, is the school year calendar next year? Good, thank you. And that's in April. I think we accomplished everything else, we're running tables, so. Anybody have anything else to add? I would love to entertain a moment. All those in favor for adjourned?
Aye.
Opposed?
Thanks, James and Jerry. Thanks, Jerry.